Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this morning's meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, November 3rd, 2025. We're going to start the meeting this morning with invocation by Pastor Tony Henry. And if you'd be standing, Supervisor Borelli is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Father, we just thank you for your presence in this meeting this morning, and we thank you for this wonderful country that we live in. We thank you for the county that we are blessed to be a part of. And I thank you for each of the supervisors and all the others that give their time and expertise to help govern our county in which we live, work, and play. Father, we ask your blessings over those in attendance this morning. Help them to have a heart for our county. Give them wisdom and discernment. Guide and protect them as they make decisions that impact Mojave County citizens. May their discussions be civil and their decisions be beneficial for our communities. Father, I ask you to be with those who are hurting, struggling, and experiencing difficulties right now, especially those impacted by the government shutdown. We ask that you intervene and open minds and hearts. You know the needs, and may our communities be a source of hope for them. Father, help us to come together and to support one another in the days ahead. We pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you, Father.
Ladies and gentlemen, please face the flag of a country that's brought more prosperity to the world than mankind has ever known. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A 3, 4, and 7. Looking for a motion in action to call for an executive session to be held on November 17th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m.
So moved. Second?
Motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As per, do have its order. Thank you. Move to the official business to come before the board this morning. Item number one, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Davis.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Committee and/or legislative reports. We'll start with Supervisor Latman.
I don't have a committee report, but I do want to use this opportunity to send some congratulations to two teams in my district. Actually, all of us share one of them. First of all, Mojave High School, congratulations. They've won again, and they are going to the playoffs on November 14th. And terrific job by that football team. Equally important for the entire county, in the second year of its existence, our Mojave College men's soccer team on Saturday defeated Yavapai College 6-0, and they are the Region One champions. And they will be playing Salt Lake Community College this Saturday at home in Bullhead City. This is just the second year of this program. Now, the women's team went into the playoffs. Unfortunately, they did lose. Terrific performance by both of these teams, and I can't say enough about both of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appointed personal privilege. I want to wish my wife a happy 41st anniversary today. Didn't require applause, though. Also, I attended the Health Department meeting where we discussed the FDA's new recommendations on vaccines and also took a look at the federal's new rules on restaurant food safety. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Borelli.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members. As you recall, last board meeting, I was in Washington, D.C., meeting with the Department of Interior with Representative Leo Biassucci. And of course, the topic was the Bureau of Land Management has leased land to Mojave County that's being in Golden Valley that's being used for that veterans park. And we asked for the Bureau of Land Management to just give that property, just sign it over to Mojave County so that way we don't have to get into a lease program, so that way the county will have full control over that. Also, meeting with them. This is why it's so important to have a relationship with our congressional delegation, meaning specifically Representative Paul Gosar, and of course, as well as with the state, Leo Biassucci, and our senators. We, meeting Senator Inghis, that it's so important to have these relationships with them as partners because it's basically a three-pronged attack when you have Congress, state, and county going after one specific item. And then, of course, we have a friendly administration that's willing to work with us. We're able to get the, protect the land that the Bureau of Land Management has control over in Lake Havasu City where the mainland lawn tramp is, what everybody calls the Riviera, to be able to turn that land over back over to the state, need the state parks, so that way we can protect our shoreline for many developers that want to come in the future to put housing along the river. So these are the kind of things that we were accomplished, and we were in Washington, D.C., I'm proud to say. We have very positive feedback on getting things done. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Barton.
Yes. I attended the Dolan Springs Community Council meeting this Saturday. They're working, they kind of got a new group together out there, and they're working to improve things in the Dolan Springs area. Yesterday, I went up to the dedication of the Camp Stevens Girl Scout camp. This is a culmination of a lot of work by a lot of people, including spearheaded by Grace Ricka, who took the bull by the horns and working with different groups and people. And the board were finally able to get a contract for her to do the Camp Stevens thing. I was up there yesterday. It was a beautiful day up there. They had parents, they had their girls. I was honored to get to speak to them about what they should look at in the future and how fortunate they are to have mentors that are working with them and parents who care enough about them to have them engaged in Girl Scout. And they are our future leaders. So that was a very enlightening and a very, very great time up there. For those that didn't go, boy, you missed it. And one thing I did note was a lot of Kingman businesses stepped up and helped Grace put that Girl Scout camp back in order, and it's a beautiful facility. Churches can use it. Any nonprofit that have people under 18 can utilize it. So it's a community thing. It's not just for the Girl Scouts. Anybody in the community can use it. And just a congratulations to those ladies that just absolutely worked so hard to keep Camp Stevens alive and well. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you, Supervisor. It's a great project. I'd report that this past week, Manager Elters, Supervisor Latman, and myself went down to Yuma for the annual CSA County Supervisors Association Legislative Policy Summit. All of the 15 counties were there. Several legislators were there. And it's a venue where the counties vote to support pushes for new legislation or resolutions to have the state step up with their financial contributions and not cost shift. The state has not a rosy financial forecast in the future. So I think in those types of times, if you've ever watched what's happened, we want to make sure that the county supervisors and all of our counties, we stand in agreement that the state shouldn't push its red down to the counties in order to put it in the black. So a lot of the times, I'd say probably 80, 90% of the time, we're playing defense down at the legislature on bad bills and cost shifts. So it was a good event. County managers report. Manager Elters.
Good morning, Chairman and board members. I have no report today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have one proclamation this morning. Proclamation recognizing the 250th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. I'm going to read this into the record. By the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, proclamation, whereas the Mojave County Board of Supervisors wish to honor the 250th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. Whereas, following a commission from the Continental Congress, the United States Marine Corps on November 10th, 1775, in Toon Tavern, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, the United States Marine Corps was born. And whereas the United States Marine Corps has fought in every climate and place in American history. And whereas United States Marines, past and present, serve with distinction, pride, and uphold the ethos of the Marines, honor, courage, and commitment. And whereas United States Marines remain as America's expeditionary force in readiness, always faithful to their nation, creed, and core, stand ready to defend America and carry her values around the world. Now therefore, in honor of the Marine Corps proclamation, November 10th, 2025, as the 250th birthday of the United States Marine Corps in Mojave County, Arizona, proclaimed this 3rd November, 2025. And with that, read, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Borelli.
Yes, I make a motion to approve proclamation.
You've heard that motion in a second. Any additional discussion?
Yes.
Supervisor Borelli.
Hurrah. Happy birthday, Marines.
Any of the other supervisors have a comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My granddaughter Holly just graduated Marine Corps boot camp last Saturday.
Excellent. Congratulations. And with that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As per, do have its order. Thank you. We have a presentation of the 2024, should that say 25 or, it says 24. Service Awards Recognizing the Dedication and Commitment of Employees Who Have Reached a 10-Year Milestone of Continuous Service, including a special recognition to Judge Derek Carlyle for an extraordinary 30 years of dedicated service to Mojave County. Who's going to be presenting that, Manager Elters? Oh, come on up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Lee and Louis will be presenting.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, and all who have joined us today. It is my privilege to recognize an esteemed group of Mojave County employees who reached important career milestones during 2024. We gather today to honor their years of dedicated service and unwavering commitment to Mojave County. As we come together to celebrate their contributions, I do want to note that today's recognition includes only those employees who chose to participate in this recognition today. Before we begin, I would like to invite our members of the board to please step forward to join our recipients for handshakes and photographs as each name is announced. Recipients, when your name is called, please come forward toward Attorney Davis. Pause for an individual photograph with the board and then step to the side by our lovely clerk. After all individual photos are taken, we would like you all to gather for a group photo with the board. If members of the board, if you're comfortable and able to, if you don't mind stepping forward, like I said, we'll have participants come to the side by Attorney Davis, be able to shake hands, take a quick photo. I promise we'll make this as quick as we can. All right, so to start with, we'll begin today's recognition with a truly exceptional milestone. 30 years of dedicated service to Mojave County. He began his career with the county attorney's office in 1994, handling juvenile and misdemeanor cases in Kingman and Lake Havasu. Over time, he was appointed as a commissioner and judge pro temp of the Superior Court, and in 2014, he was elected as a Superior Court judge for Division Two. He served in Lake Havasu City until 2019, overseeing a wide variety of cases, and has since served as a presiding criminal judge focusing on felony matters. For more than 30 years, he's been dedicated to serving the people of Mojave County and ensuring justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, Judge Derek Carlyle. Next, we're pleased to recognize those employees who reached their 10-year service milestone in 2024. Over the past decade, these individuals have exemplified integrity, professionalism, and commitment to public service. Their contributions have strengthened our organization and enriched the communities we proudly serve. These are done in alphabetical order by last name, so we will start with Aricada Cerulli, appraiser two for the assessors. Next up was Megan DeBaca, Deputy Probation Officer III of probation, but I am not sure that she made her attendance. So we will still applaud her and thank her for her dedication to Mojave County. Next up, Jackie Kenny, appraiser two for the assessors. Joseph LaDell, appraisal supervisor, assessors. Rhonda Mayo, Public Fiduciary Director. Melissa Palmer, Public Health Director. Erica Schoolmeister, Public Fiduciary Case Specialist for Public Fiduciary. And then last but not least, Cody Stevenson, Detention Center Supervisor for Mojave County Sheriff's Office. Congratulations to all of our service award recipients. We are truly grateful for your commitment and proud to celebrate your achievements today. So in closing, if you wouldn't mind, one more picture as a group with the board, and we will be all complete. Thank you.
Congratulations again to all the recipients. We'll move to the consent agenda, items four through 28. Supervisor Letman, would you like to remove any items from consent this morning?
I do not have any to remove.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Ghul, would you like to remove any items from consent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, number 15.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Borelli.
Yeah, Supervisor Barton.
Nothing this morning.
And I am not going to remove anything either, so looking for a motion to approve consent as presented minus item 15.
So moved.
Second.
With that motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I appear to have it do have its order. Thank you. Move to item number 15. Approve and sign amendment number three to contract 23P-2, title 36 Managed Care, Prepetition, Screening and Evaluation Services with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona Health Choice Flagstaff, Arizona, renewing the contract for an additional one-year period through December 31, 2026, with all of the terms and conditions remaining the same, on behalf of the Indigent Defense Services Department, Supervisor Ghul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just thought this would be an interesting one for the public to understand what we're doing here.
Blake, good morning.
Morning, Chairman Lingandfeltler, Supervisors. This is a mandated service, and it's a routine contract renewal. The contractor's not asking for any type of rate increase or modification to the current contract, it's just merely an extension. This contract covers the mandated services for patients who are court ordered to be evaluated and potentially treated, for those who are at danger to themselves, danger to others, gravely disabled, or persistent or acutely disabled. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Supervisor Ghul. I do. I'm curious, why do we buy this from an insurance company?
We do not buy it. They have the expertise to subcontract to the providers. The insurance company was previously the REBA, the Regional Behavioral Health Authority. So they have the expertise and the staff to manage all of these services for us through subcontractors.
So we're, but we're buying a service rather than buying insurance?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Heard that motion. Do I have a second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I appear to have it do have its order. Thank you. That brings us, oh, excuse me. After consent, we are going to take a brief pause for public recognition for a donation. Does Manager Elthers, you want to speak to that, or does somebody want to speak to that? I think that there's a... Laura, can you explain what's going on?
I can. We recently had a request from an organization with VFW who donated money after raising it for the Veterans Park out in Golden Valley. They put in a lot of time in organizing that fundraiser, and from the pictures and things that I have seen, it looked like a lot of fun. And I know that, again, a lot of work went into it. The money that they have raised is going to the Veterans Park, and I think it's their wish at some point that they get a, is it a?
Splash pad.
A splash pad, that's what it was. I was trying to think of, you know, the little water sprinkles. So, go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Donna Arnold Post, and I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors in Mojave County for their dedication in seeing this endeavor through. We had a wonderful time and a great turnout. We look forward to continuing to work with you on future Veterans Park events in Golden Valley, and we are honored to establish this relationship with the board and proud to present the check from the Ed Hitchens Post 2555 of the Veterans of Farm Wars in the amount of $3,809.85. We'd like to thank Don Martin for his efforts and Ron Ghul for making this happen. Thank you very much.
That makes, let's see here, public hearings? So first public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing on item number 29. Discussion and possible action: Approve the adoption of BOS Resolution Number 2025-185, rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 306-45-016C from an AR-10A agricultural residential, 10-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona, Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. We have no one signed up to speak during the public hearing on item number 29. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on item number 29? At the podium, state your name and address for the clerk. Thank you.
Stephen Robinson, Golden Valley. I have a question. Is this property in an, is this subdivision proposed, minor land division, in an area zoned rural development area? Because the minimum parcel size according to the general plan is five acres minimum. So if you allow this development, if it's in the area zoned where designated as rural development, you're violating the general plan, and I wonder why you would want to do that? And I just, I don't know it is or isn't. I hadn't looked at it, but the question came to me. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak during public hearing on item number 29? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing on item number 29. Supervisor Ghul? Oh, it looks like you're going to make a comment. Does anybody?
Getting ready.
Anybody have any comments? Would you like to hear from staff? Mr. Hultrey, would you come down? Maybe address the one inquiry we got during the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, yes, this property is located within the suburban residential designation, which is one acre and greater, one to five acres.
Thank you. I'd, discussion or entertain a motion? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I appear to have it do have its order. Thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing on item number 30. Discussion and possible action: Approve the adoption of BOS Resolution 2025-187, a special use permit for Assessor's Parcel Number 312-1280 to allow for a water distribution facility in an AR zone in the Antares Road vicinity, Mojave County, general area, Mojave County, Arizona, Commission recommended approval by a seven to one vote. We do have one person signed up to speak, Amanda Kaufman.
Do I need to state my address and stuff?
For the record.
Okay. Amanda Kaufman, I am here on behalf of Brown Drilling. Our address is 3375 North Bank Street in Kingman. Good morning, Chairman Lingandfeltler and Supervisors. As a county responsive to the needs of its residents and focusing on business retention and expansion, this is a great example of businesses coming to the board to request approval to provide a water hall service station to those residing nearby. The cost of drilling a well is sometimes not feasible for everyone, and to have available water nearby would not only allow residents living nearby to have water, and some of them have indicated they've owned property for 50 years. And it would also reduce the amount of travel and the resulting dust on Antares Road to get water. This location is between mile marker 11 and 12. It's about 12 miles throughout 66 and about 20 to Pierce Ferry. And there's no other options nearby. There are some private wells that are several miles away, but no other resources. The county approved these small lots, most of them, probably 90% of them, are just over an acre, 1.25, back in 1961, 64 years ago. And we are here with a business wanting to help the owners of these lots by providing an accessible water hall station, reducing the amount of wear and tear on residential vehicles, and potentially bringing the reality of the American dream just a little bit closer to everyone's grasp. For anyone familiar with those who haul water versus being directly connected to a water system, the usage is significantly reduced and conservation methods are a given. In addition, I would suspect county roads would benefit from a water source on Antares, especially when they're doing road maintenance in the area. I support this project 100%, and I hope you support it as well. And I just, I have a little picture for the camera. I don't know what direction it needs to go, so I'm just going to pop it up there. I'll start that way. I'll start this way. This is ju, this is basically this area, and these little purple squares are actually 640 acres, and all the little tiny squares inside these big purple squares are primarily one acre, 1.25 acres, and this little orange area is where they're proposing to put this in. And you can see out in the middle of Antares Road, primarily, there's all these little lots out there, and they've been out there for 64 years. So this is a great opportunity to promote businesses coming into the area and making resources more available to those living nearby. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
We'll bring it back up if there is. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during public hearing on item number 30? Please come down, state your name and address for the record.
Jennifer Esposito, 3211 East Snookley Avenue, Kingman. I just want to say that I support Ms. Kaufman in this. As someone who's a rural property owner on water hall, I understand the need to have water. The county would like to develop areas. They keep talking about, oh, well, we'll get the, more tax revenue or whatever. So I'm familiar with this area. I deliver my newspaper out in that area, and I think that this is a great idea to bring water to these people, and maybe they will then be able to do more with their land and make more use of it, and maybe, you know, bring more revenue in. I know a lot of people think that somehow some of us are anti-development, but that's just simply not true. We're just for responsible development, and I think that this is a pathway to help that happen. Thank you.
Sorry, anyone else wishing to speak on item number 30 during public hearing? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing on item number 30. This is my district. I think this is a good project. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Heard that motion is second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I appear to have it do have its order. Going to open the public hearing on item number 31. Discussion and possible action: Approve or deny the adoption of BOS Resolution 2025-188, a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 3135515A from an AR-10 to an AR-5A, five-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for minor land division in the Kingman vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona, Commission recommended denial by unanimous vote. We have nobody signed up to speak on item number 31. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak during public hearing on item number 31? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing on item number 31. Open it up to the board for discussion or a motion. Supervisor Ghul. I'm sorry. Keep jumping the gun today.
My stuff on that side.
Supervisor Martin, thank you.
Yes, my understanding from going to the planning and zoning meeting on this was this is the, this is kind of like bot zoning thing, where this was the only request in an area that typically is rezoned different or zoned different, and this one would be and I think Scott, Mr. Hultrey ought to address this, but he can clarify it, but
We can have him come down.
My understanding was that it was, it was
Yep.
Against everything else out there.
Sure, all of us watched the planning and zoning commission hearing, but you want to give an overview of that?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, absolutely. This property is located east of Kingman. The surrounding properties within the area are greater than 10 acres in size. There's nothing smaller than that. It's within a rural designation with the general plan. With that, staff is not recommending approval for the rezone. I believe it currently is owned by several property owners, and they came to the commission and the board two years ago, approximately two years ago, for the same request, but was denied. We're requesting the same at this one as well.
Thank you, Scott. Supervisor Martin.
Mr. Hultrey, what, I don't understand this. Why would the planning and zoning oppose this if you all were thinking that it's a good deal?
Mr. Chairs, Supervisor Martin, no, we do not. We are not recommending approval.
You're not rec, I misunderstood him. Okay. Make a motion.
Or?
Aye.
Okay. You've heard that motion. Do I have a second? I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I appear to have it do have its order. Thank you. All right, our last public hearing today, item number 32. I'm going to open the public hearing on item number 32. Discussion and possible action: Approve the adoption of BOS Resolution 2025-177, as requested by Raymond A. McCool, for the abandonment of an undeveloped public right of way along the westerly line of Lot 1, less any portion of adjoining Powell Street of New Kingman, addition Unit 9, tract number 1102, being a portion of Section 29, Township 22, north range 16 west, Hila Salt River Meridian, Mojave County, Arizona, as filed in Mojave County official records and in, as an approved subdivision recorded September 15, 1969, with said proposed abandonment more particularly described in attached Exhibit A document, and further accept the offer of purchase for the total amount of $6,000 and no cents, which is equal to the appraised value as provided by an Arizona licensed appraiser, to be deposited in the Highway User Revenue Fund 205 account, and authorize the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors to sign the attached quitclaim deed, which conveys the abandoned portions of the public rights of way to the abutting parcel owner with a granted public utility easement inclusive of the abandoned portions as defined in attached Exhibit A and being subject to the completion of ARS Title 28-7201 through 7215 at no cost to Mojave County, and authorize the assessor to include the parcel on the tax rolls upon conveyance by recording of the deed. We have nobody signed up to speak on item number 32 during public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on public hearing? State your name and address for the record.
Scotty from O'Hare. I've noticed in the last few meetings, and I have stated at last meeting, that there's only eight people on the zoning commission voting. Somebody up here is not appointing new members to this commission. So I'd like to know how we can keep track of this, the public, why, why? There's five of you up there, you get to point two people, so who's not appointing somebody?
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing on item number 32? Going once, going twice. I'm going to call, close the public hearing on item number 32. Open it up for discussion or a motion by the board.
I'll move to approve item 32 as read.
Thank you, Supervisor Letman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Heard that motion is second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I appear to have it do have its order. Thank you. That moves us to our regular agenda, and item number 33, which I suspect most of the people in the audience are here to participate in. people in the audience are here to participate in. Discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Mojave County Ordinance 2025-03, a request to adopt the 2025 Mojave County General Plan to replace the 2015 Mojave County General Plan as required by Arizona revised statute, continued from the October 23, 2025 BOS Special Meeting. Does staff have a presentation to give on this item? A brief presentation?
Yeah. No.
And then we'll get into public comment.
Morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We do have a brief presentation that we'd like to give in regards to the, or the policy that's in place for the three-mile urban developments. I'm gonna turn the time over to Matthew Gunderson to kind of present on that.
Thank you. We just wanted to provide a little bit of clarification. There's a lot of questions and concerns about this, the last meeting. Let me just start it here. So from the 2015 general plan, there's an area, or a definition of a growth area, which is areas in the county which have been rapidly growing, and that's where it specifically mentions three miles. So when staff was looking at where to incorporate this language for urban development near city limits, that's where that three-mile radius initially came from, is this definition of a growth area that was already included in both the previous 2015 version and unchanged into the 2025 version. So with that, just wanted to point out the two different policies that we added this into in the 2025 general plan. Policy 12-11, I think, is the most commonly discussed one, where proposed development within three miles of an incorporated area should be required to develop to urban development standards. We also added language to policy 44.1 about specifically connection to a centralized wastewater system for urban projects as required by ADEQ, and then we added in that three-mile radius. So just want to make sure that the board is aware of both of those instances where that was added. I think, I just wanted to clarify what those urban development standards are. So this is from the land division regulations for when somebody's coming in to provide a new subdivision. These are the types of improvements that are required for a, for a subdivision. So water supply, water is required to be provided to each lot within a subdivision if any of the lots there are five acres or le- or less. Fire hydrants are required anytime those water lines are required to each individual lot. A sewer system is for subdivisions with any lots less than one acre in size, and that's where we get into that urban density. Electrical service is required for anyone, anytime we have lots less than five acres. So that's this suburban development area as well. Telephone service is suburban as well, anytime we're under five acres. Sidewalks are required in urban development areas, anytime we have a development that has three or more units per acre, which is approximately 14,520 square foot lots or smaller. And also anytime the development is over 40 acres in size, or if it's located within a quarter mile of school. Then we have streetlights are required anytime that sidewalks are required, and then those paved roads leading to and through the, throughout the subdivision is anytime that it's less than five acres. So the, the two, or the three main ones that fall under only the urban category is that centralized sewer, sidewalks, and then streetlights. And so I'm just gonna go through these pretty quickly. These are the cities within Mojave County. This is the three-mile radius, what that three-mile radius would look like. This, I've also added the fire district, so the entire area here is within the Colorado City Fire District. And then this is the cane beds area, just zoomed in a little bit within that three-mile buffer. And then we also wanted to take a look at what it would look like as a two-mile buffer instead of three, if we wanted to, to make that buffer smaller. Again, here's the, the cane beds area, still portions of it fall within that two-mile buffer, but not as much as before. So here we have the city of Kingman with that three-mile radius. Here are the fire districts. You can see the greenish-yellow color on the left side there is the Golden Valley Fire District. The purple north of Kingman is the Northern Arizona Fire District, and then that darker blue color to the east is the Pinion Pines Fire District. So this is that three-mile buffer as it extends into Golden Valley. You can see it does extend, that's Tomben Road where that extends to at the farthest And then here is that area north of Kingman as you're going up Stockton Hill Road. So here's what it would look like if we shortened it again to the two-mile buffer and with the fire districts. That portion that is in the Golden Valley Fire District with the two-mile buffer is mostly federally owned property. There's one small portion that's privately owned. Um, I'll go back, sorry. So that one, none of the developed area of Golden Valley gets included in that area, but you still see some of that area to the north in the Northern Arizona Fire District, as well as to the east in the Pinion Pines Fire District. Here is the Bullhead City area with that three-mile buffer, and then with the fire districts added in there. We can see here in the Fort Mojave area, the southern end of that three-mile buffer goes down to Joy Lane. So here it is again with the two-mile buffer instead, and those fire districts, I brought the, the blue and the fire district is the Fort Mojave Fire District. That purple pink color is the Bullhead City Fire District. So the Bullhead City Fire District does extend outside of the city limits a little bit there. So here again is the two-mile buffer. It goes down south of Aztec. Uh, sorry, I can't see the exact road that it's on, but north of Hammer Lane. Here is Lake Havasu City with the three-mile buffer, again with the fire districts. We have the Desert Hills Fire District that extends on the north side there. And then this is that area that is northeast of Lake Havasu City, where a lot of the development that we see outside of city limits, that area is gonna be the same in the two-mile buffer as well, and that is a part of the Desert Hills Fire District. I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarification on where those boundaries are and what those improvements would entail. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you, Matt. Supervisor Latman, thank you.
Could you go back to your first slide?
Absolutely.
It's on my screen. There we go. Are you clarifying, are these items presently in the general plan, or are you suggesting a change?
So the growth area definition is in there currently, and the, it's the italicized and underlined portion is what's being added in the 2025 version.
Okay, did the italicized portion go to the Planning and Zoning Commission already?
Yes, it did.
Okay, that's not a change.
Supervisor Martin, you have a comment?
Yes, sir. I received two letters from fire districts in opposition to this. Also, I receive, or I had the fire chief in Golden Valley and assistant fire chief in Golden Valley come to my office. All three of them, those districts are in opposition to this, and specifically 12.11. My question is, why would they be, why would the fire district be in opposition of this? What is, what is your take on that?
Chairman Lincoln Felter, Supervisor Martin, I really can't speak on behalf of the fire districts. The concerns that I heard with this is easing annex, easing the annexation process for some of these areas. I think a lot of the improvements are already gonna be required for most subdivisions. I don't know that it, it changes a lot of what's required. The biggest change would be that centralized sewer is probably the biggest urban requirement that doesn't already fall under suburban development, which is most of the subdivisions that we see are either that urban or suburban density.
Where, was the planning and zoning department, did you see those letters that I got? Have you seen those letters of objection?
Chairman Lincoln Felter, Supervisor Martin, I've seen, I've seen one letter from Fort Mojave area. That's the only one that I have seen personally.
Okay, there's two. Plus, the personal visit from the fire chief in Golden Valley and assistant chief. Now, here's my thought. If there's three districts out there that objected to this language being implemented in the 2025 general plan, there's a reason for it. And I, I, and like I say, I talked to the chief and assistant chief, and I've got the letters, and I think, I think everybody got, got the letters from them. So my concern is, if we have fire districts that are concerned about this, they're worried about annexation and losing their base, I think that our position should be, if they're in opposition of it, we don't want to support it. And I don't know if it's appropriate, but at some point I'll make a motion on that.
Well, appreciate that, and I have a hunch that this is gonna get referred back to planning and zoning. So I think that at that point, that's the appropriate thing, but I have some follow-up questions for you. After seeing the maps, I appreciate those maps. Let's try to be critical thinkers and, and use our brains here, right? And I appreciate that, that's more data, right? So I think the three-mile radius is maybe a little too large. The areas that it is District One Supervisor, I'm primarily concerned with is the Kingman area. The reason I'm concerned with the Kingman area is because we have, you know, over $200,000 of transportation infrastructure going on right now. The Rancho Santa Fe, I'm sorry, the Flying Fortress Interchange, I think is what they call it now, that's gonna open up the entire east bench of Kingman. And my concern as District One Supervisor is I don't want to end up with another Butler New Kingman, where we didn't have sewer, or we didn't have, and Supervisor Martin's predecessor actually used some of her ARPA funds to partner with City of Kingman to go in and, and put in sewer infrastructure after the fact. I think by, by having something, maybe a one-mile radius or something, and maybe that's something that we could send back to planning and zoning, that would cover that east bench of Kingman. And so you'd require the developer to pull that stuff up in, up front, and so you wouldn't have to worry about what, what we have dealt with in, in Butler New Kingman, where there's been just a lot of, ADEQ has gotten involved because of all the septic systems being so cramped together and all these other things. And then the other area I'm worried about is up north in my district, up on the Arizona-Utah border, where you have Colorado City and you have Centennial Park. They have two separate systems, and there's maybe a mile, mile and a half between the two systems. I'd like to see, and I think, you know, 20 years down the road, those systems are gonna merge into one valley-wide system. So I think that that's something that I would like to encourage from a development standpoint. But I think maybe a mile would be better than, than three miles. That seems maybe a little excessive. With that said, about the revision, I don't understand why the fire districts think that they can dictate to the Board of Supervisors what development standards we adopt for subdivisions when it comes to sewer systems and sidewalks and street lighting. Why does the fire district get to tell the board what, what we get to require? We don't have anything to do at the county level with an annexation process. What I would say, and what I would ask is, have the fire districts had a conversation with their, their cities, because this is only within a mile or three miles right now, but hopefully maybe a mile within an incorporated city? Have they had a conversation with their city mayor and council about what plans do they have for annexation over the next decade? I've talked to Kingman, and they're looking at maybe a little bit of what they call Phase Two of the airport, trying to annex that, but that's really the only area that Kingman is looking at, at annexing, because they don't have a primary property tax, and they don't think that they can absorb the costs. I don't think that they probably had those conversations, if I had to guess, but to think that this policy has anything to do with pushing annexations, that's a municipal process, and that requires a citizen's petition, it requires a vote, it requires all these different steps under statute. Mojave County's not involved. So I think it's a little misplaced to attack this policy based on annexation fears. That's, I don't see the connection there. Supervisor Braly?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And to that point, you are correct, it's, they, they are a political subdivision, their own entity. County, there is, I, I met with the person who originated their concern and posed this question, that's, that went out to all the other fire districts that, where we got the response from. And there's a question, and his confusion was, is it gonna be easy for the county to annex or city to annex into their districts? And I explained to him, your own political subdivision, for a city to want to annex into more property and, and take that in is a huge undertaking. Being on city council before, and some of you all know this, or there's four of us that have been on council, know that this has to go to the voters, and it's an extremely big rock to push up a hill. And their concern was that the cities or towns would encroach onto them, and they take less of their, take more of their tax base. But you're, you're absolutely right. This has nothing to do with the general plan, their own political subdivision. I understand the original question that started all this. He, he got it from some kind of misinterpretation from somebody from the county, and he, he ran with the question that brought up the concerns. To my opinion, this is not a concern, doesn't affect the general plan one bit, so, because it's two different animals.
Thank you. Any other comments? Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gunderson, uh, streetlights?
Yes, streetlights are required anytime that sidewalks are required within a subdivision.
You want to see people pull their hair out, put streetlights around Lake Havasu City?
We, we do, do, we-
We do not like streetlights. So effectively, we would have a, a halo around Lake Havasu City blocking the night skies.
Yeah, Chairman Lincoln Felter, Supervisor Gould, we see a lot of petitions of exception for streetlights. I would not be opposed to taking a look at that requirement in a future update of the land division.
And I think most people that live in the rural areas like to see this, the sky, so I think we should just strike streetlights altogether. Is this gonna apply to new subdivisions, or what do we do with the infill properties?
Chairman Lincoln Felter, Supervisor Gould, yes, this would be required for new subdivisions. If you're doing infill, we do see small subdivisions as infill projects. It would apply to those as well. It would not apply to somebody that just buys a piece of property on their own and looks to put a house, a single residence on it. We could only enforce that as we go through the, the formal subdivision.
So when do you hit the subdivision at five?
Correct, yeah, five or, you can go up to five as a minor land division. More than five is a formal subdivision.
Okay, so if somebody did a five-way split on that, on a piece of property, would they be subject to these rules?
It would not be.
Okay. If you look at your three-mile map, you pretty much take all the property out of Fort Mojave. It encompasses all of, almost down to Boundary Cone. You're like one, one street shy of Boundary Cone, so you put that whole area into that three-mile radius. I don't know what the people of the area think about that. I, I think three miles is just too, I think it's too much. You might, might be parcels that abut city limits, that might be something to take a look at, but I think three miles is just way too big. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Latman, comments?
I can assure you that Bullhead City has no plans to annex Fort Mojave. I would almost remove the limit completely. That's, and, and question for Attorney Davis. We're just gonna send this back to the P and Z, obviously, for, are they gonna decide zero, one, two, or three, or do we send them a recommendation from our board on what to do?
Both are options. If, if the board has a specific suggestion or recommendation or something they'd like, they can specify it. Otherwise, my understanding is staff will probably take what is said here and will present it to planning and zoning, and planning and zoning will go from there.
All right, we've got a lot of people that have signed up to speak. We'll get into that. If we have any other questions for you, Mr. Gunderson, we'll bring you back. Thank you. Sheila Miller?
And Elizabeth Miller, you're on deck.
My name is Sheila Miller. I live at 3933 Teddy Roosevelt Road, Golden Valley. I live at 3933 Teddy Roosevelt Road, Golden Valley. I hope people agree to have Golden Valley and any other areas who are not happy with Engel Homes wanting to put the city style houses in their areas. When we were here last time, I noticed that people in Kingman seemed they weren't real happy with the plans either. I don't know if I just took it from what was being said, but that's what I felt, and that's all I can go by. I don't see why you can't vote approving the areas that are agreed with the planning that people of the cities want, the areas that they do want it. I don't know why all eight areas are put into one plan to go be pushed at one time. To me, it seems like it should have been one area at a time instead of everything done at once. I think this has been going on for about 10 years. I think if Engel Homes wants to start building, they should. I also think they should be able to do it on the cities, the areas that want it, and go back to planning with the areas that are fighting it, like Golden Valley. I really think that we need to take the time to let the communities figure out what's best for them and for Engel Homes to come with the communities, because they're trying to put their places in our areas. We'd like for those people to come and be part of our community, not just feel like they're outsiders in their own area. I just don't understand why we have to push it all through at once. I think it should have been done on individual areas that want it. And you have some areas that do want it and do agree with it. But let's keep it separate on some of the areas that don't. I also want, if this does go through, that Engel Homes takes care of the roads properly before they start. We've already had problems with the last one we had a month ago, where because they're, you know, getting into the dirt and stuff, that with the rain, it brought some of the mud down and wiped out some of the, the driveways of people. Let's fix that first before they keep going. That way, this isn't happening. This will make the communities get along better instead of all this fighting. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Elizabeth Miller. Angel Lund, you're on deck.
Good morning, Chairman Lingenfelter and Supervisors. My name is Elizabeth Miller. I live at 3194 West Moncondaco Valley. Due to the comments that I've heard this morning, that this may go back to flooding and zoning, my comments may be moot, but I'll go ahead with them anyway, just in case. I attended the special meeting regarding the general plan on October 23rd. At that meeting, if I heard correctly, legal counsel made a suggestion that I thought could be a good solution to the current debate on the Golden Valley portion of the general plan. He suggested that the board of supervisors approve all the sections of the plan except for Golden Valley, which could then be discussed and voted at a future meeting. Due to the complexity of the general plan, passing the currently agreed upon sections will allow the county to proceed with growth in those areas and not be held up with Section Five issues. Personally, I'm against the proposed Dorado Plan, both in the 2015 and current version. However, I do not believe it is in the best interest of the county to pause the entire plan based on this one issue. I hope you consider my suggestion should the occasion arise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Angel Lund.
Teresa Merrill is on deck.
Angel Lund, Golden Valley, hello again. This will be about two years now that we've been fighting the Dorado Plan. Last year, it was denied. We thought we had come to some sort of an agreement on the one acre when we were told by the subcommittee, and if you could put that up, I would appreciate it. This is what we were shown. This is what the Planning and Zoning Department was shown, and you'll notice the Dorado is all in what you call now suburban, one acre to five acre lots. Well, after hearing the Planning Department, that sounds great, because Dorado, Engel Homes could build five acres at a time, one acre lots, and not have to do this big, huge subdivision with all these other requirements. They could get water one at a time for each home, GBID or wherever they decide. They could put in individual septic systems. They would have no fight from me or most of us out in the audience, because we, all we're asking for is one acre lots. They wouldn't have to put in sidewalks, they wouldn't have to put in lighting, they wouldn't even have to improve the roads. Sounds good, right? Well, I'm hoping that you deny at least our portion of the plan, the general plan, until this is met, because unfortunately, I don't want to be here, you don't want me to be here, but I'm going to be here until we get this figured out. And if it isn't figured out now, then we're going to have to start looking at the water and where the water is and when the new mine opens back up, because that dropped the wells three feet when that, when that mine was running. And they have water rights out of Golden Valley, and right now, they have Pioneer Water. So there goes a lot of water out of our valley. That's a major consideration. Another consideration is we asked to have the commercial zone all along Highway 68, State Route 68. I don't see that anywhere in here. All of it should be commercial zoned. We don't have a problem with that, but it should be fenced at the back of the commercial zone to keep the cattle out, protect the people, protect the cars, protect the travelers. Thank you.
Teresa Merrill. Teresa Merrill. And Tony Knapp, you're on deck.
Good morning, Mojave County Board and Mr. Chairperson. My name is Teresa Merrill. I go by Terry. I would like to apologize in advance, should I become redundant. That's not my intent. My husband and I purchased our home located at 6740 West Aguafria Drive in Golden Valley 25 years ago. In that time period, we have seen the growth we signed up for, one plus acre lots zoned AG. The Dorado project became evident to me, and I began attending meetings listening carefully and fairly. Danielle approached me, asking for help obtaining signatures from people 300 feet from this development to be brought before this board about a year and a half, two years ago, I'm guessing the timeframe. As a citizen living 300 feet from the proposed development, I agreed to approach the residents. I would generally leave in the early evening to ensure that people who worked would be home when I knocked on their door. I was never coercive or demanding, as I knocked on many, many doors. I personally feel qualified to discuss what my neighbors want for their community, but I don't have to tell you, as you have those signatures on record. Of them, of all those homes that I've visited within the 300 feet boundary, only three of them were in favor of the Dorado project, three. One of them told me that if he didn't get a grocery store, he was moving. His house is for sale today. Another one blasted political expletives at me and threw me off his property. Side note, I don't scare easily, so I continued on down the road knocking on doors. The third one wouldn't even open their door. They wouldn't even face me. They voiced their opinion through, behind the doors. So this is what I heard from my community. I stood in the homes of all the people that, that were against this and listened to, to their concerns, which really and truly haven't been addressed clearly. And the life's, you know, I, I've watched Golden Valley, and my point is, is that they've been vocal, they've been diligent in expressing that they want well-placed development zoned appropriately for the lifestyle they've chosen, done with respect and consideration for their beloved community. They want their concerns to be addressed with validation, solutions, and done so responsibly. At the risk of becoming redundant, I won't name them any concerns, because we all know what they are. I am aware that the new proposal is meant to appease, I'm sorry, I'm aware that the new proposal is meant to appease.
I have to cut you off. I'm sorry, we have a bunch of speakers for three minutes. Thank you for your time.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you, gentlemen.
Tony Knapp. Gordon Morris, you're on deck.
Tony Knapp, Golden Valley, thank you for your time. As a concerned citizen, none of you guys probably live out there. We do. You live in the cities, where you got your rules and regulations. We're concerned about the fire, the theft, the flooding, the roads, the traffic. As you know, 68, there's a lot of wrecks on it. I live about 500 yards off of 68, and I see the fire department daily for all the speeding going down there. One, you got to take care of the traffic. Control it. Coming out of Vega or out of Laughlin, Bullhead, it's a zoo coming down. I get to watch it every night on my park porch where they come down. Fire departments left and right out of there, more patrol. We need work on flooding, roads. Right now, is it, it's, my road is dust. I got six inches of sand or better after every rain. People don't obey the speed limit as it is. Dust rolls everywhere. I get it, we live in a country. It happens, but there's no control of people speeding. The sewer, you're going to have this big community, one sewer plant goes down, who's going to, where are you going to go to the bathroom? Where if individual septic systems, one person, fix your problem, go on. Just take a second look at it, guys and gals. Appreciate it.
Gordon Morris. Gordon Morris. Oh, Stephen Robinson. Oh. What's your name, sir? Okay. Thank you. Stephen Robinson. Mr. Robinson, it looks like you had somebody give you their time, so I'm going to give you five minutes.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Stephen Robinson, Golden Valley, Arizona. Chairman Lingenfelter, Supervisor Steph. I noted that Mr. Gunderson's first slide stated that Golden Valley is one of the, quote, "rapid growth areas" in the county, according to both the 2015 and 2025 proposed general plan. Golden Valley was recognized 30 years ago as an area for future growth, because over 25 square miles was designated as urban development or low-density residential, not including the railroad sections. Well, I'm now glad to hear that some of the no-development crowd now supports commercial development along the 68 corridor. That is rational, and what is in the plan is not. When the board approved removing private property rights for over 25 square miles in the 2002 Golden Valley Area Plan, it was, that was previously approved by the 1995 general plan, the first plan in 30 years. It was in response to a former supervisor's quite ridiculous idea of wanting to put this building out in Golden Valley. And so the, the city leaders of Kingman said, to heck with that, we're going to take away all development rights out in Golden Valley that was put into the 95 general plan. However, approving the general plan that's proposed to you now would be giving control to a small group of people of other people's private property rights. That violates the Arizona Constitution. That means taking away the private property rights of people that purchase land in the corridor and around the valley for the express purpose of future development, not back 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago, but in the future. I understand the NIMBY mindset, I don't want a nuclear power plant in my backyard, but for people to take away private property rights of the people that owned the land long before many of the people had moved to Golden Valley, and to say, we don't want any rural or any urban growth, any development out in there, it's a socialist mindset. It's a, wanting to control other people's private properties.
Order, please.
So it's unconstitutional to restrict private property rights, especially in light of the presentation by Mr. Gunderson. In Mojave County, there's less than 2,200 square miles of private property out of 13,000-plus square miles. Out of the 300 square miles in Golden Valley, less than 40% can be developed even into industrial along the corridor. The rest is either public lands or the railroad land cut up into one and a quarter acres. Now, I'll, I'll tell you this about the, the rest of Golden Valley. There is 12,000 one to two acre parcels in Golden Valley. Less than 20% of them have been built on. Out of the 300 plus or minus one half acre parcels in Crystal Springs Estate, about 50% of them are developed. However, out of the 210 lots in Ship Estates one and three, there's one vacant lot that has not yet been built on. So that means that's a 90, 97 and a half percent popularity rate of development in Golden Valley for smaller parcels. But unfortunately, a lot of these people are going to say, oh, no, we can't have any development, because I don't want any neighbors, and that's unfortunate. But I recommend that the county return the general plan back to development services, not only just for the corridor, but look at this, from Redwall to, to Aguafria, the two 10-mile strips north and south of Golden Valley or of the Highway 68 corridor, and that you allow some urban or low-density residential in those two. There's about three to five sections of land that could be allowed for reasonable development. I can guarantee you, most of us will be in heaven long before that development is all fully implemented, just in the areas that we're talking about. It's unfortunate that people want to take away private property rights, because they don't want any neighbors. Golden Valley was always meant to be a future urban area, not a forever rural area. Thank you.
If I get, no order. People, individuals have a right to come to this podium during a public meeting and express their opinion without fear of being booed. I'm not going to let any of you be booed. I would just ask that you provide the same amount of respect to everybody. This is a public meeting, everybody can have their own views at this podium, at a public meeting, without the fear of being booed. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to address the constitutionality of zoning. That was settled by the Supreme Court case, Village of Euclid versus Ambler Realty in 1926. So whether we agree with it or not, that's what the court ruled, and it ruled it 99 years ago. Just did a little tidbit of information. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Pistorino. And Stephen Pistorino, you're on deck. Thank you.
My name is Don Pistorino. I live at 4873 North Teddy Roosevelt in Golden Valley. I've lived there since 1987 with my husband. Golden Valley has always been a place where people come in and move. Nobody's keeping people out. Anybody in America can move to Golden Valley and buy a lot, put on a mobile home, build a house, put an RV. Nobody is stopping from them from doing that. So a lot of this talk is just ridiculous. There is nobody stopping anybody from doing anything. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission seems intent on forcing their agenda down our throat. When I went to their meeting a couple of months ago on this topic, they were very clear that they want to control how people live in Golden Valley, and we were very offended by it. And it seems like they haven't. And it seems like they haven't changed. Excuse me. My main issue is water. I don't see where the Mojave County General Plan addresses water. I don't see any plans for drilling wells by the county or drilling wells by Engel Homes or how the water is gonna be handled. I see a lot of, you guys are still talking about building data centers, and you know darn well, those suck up water and electricity. It's like you can't take a firm position on anything and you're always trying to play both sides, which I really object to. I would like to see you guys show some background, put our water first. We are in the middle of a drought and you guys are not addressing the water issues enough. It is too serious to let this go. I'm really disgusted by it. I mean, I've said this before in past meetings, and it's like you guys have, you're fixated on this development stuff. We all know there's a problem with housing and everything else, but if we have no water, there is no development, and it hurts the people that are already here. And your obligation is to take care of the people that are already in Mojave County and not the rest of the world. I don't care about the people from California or the people back east who might move here. I don't care about Engel Homes. Their main position is just to make a profit at our expense. I am utterly opposed to the Dorado development. It should have been stricken from the Mojave County General Plan 20 years ago. The people have always been against it. And our voices are important. We're the ones who pay the taxes. We're the ones who paid for the roads. We paid for the water system out there, and this thing threatens our water supply and our way of life and our quality of life. And it just totally disgusts me that you guys do not take our concerns seriously. And that's all I have to say.
Stephen Pistorino.
Uh, Stephen Pistorino, uh, Golden Valley. You know, we've been fighting this for 40 years. And you've heard all the concerns and questions and everything, but I want to know, where are you gonna get, who's putting up the $50 million? You even stated that Arizona doesn't have the money. Who's gonna put the $50 million in infrastructure for the 3,000 homes? A family of four, that's 12,000 people. You're gonna need wells, roads, at least two more fire stations, police stations. Are you requiring Engel Homes to put up a bond of $50 million? Or they're just gonna take the profit and put it on the taxpayer? Where are they gonna get the money for this? Maybe Planning and Zoning can tell me. Could you tell me? You stated Arizona does not have the funds to do this. It's gonna cost millions of dollars to drill the wells, and if you want to see a sewer system, go to Laughlin to get a $10 million one, and you could smell it at 6 o'clock in the evening because the whole town could smell it. Where are you gonna get the money for this? Are you requiring them to put up a bond? 3,000 homes, roads, fire, infrastructure, lights? And where are you gonna get the traffic? You're getting any more police officers? Where are you gonna get the money for this? You know, the easiest way of making money is to create something that somebody, that everybody wants, but then they, you tell them they can't have it. That's the easiest way of making money. So that's all I gotta say. I want to know where you, I, I want to hear where you're gonna get the money for this. It's gonna cost 50 million. I mean, look at the debacle with the, the roads and the 68 overpass. You're gonna put in 3,000 homes? Where are you gonna get the money for that? Is, are they putting it up because they're just gonna build it and leave? And we've been fighting this for 40 years. Anyway, thank you very much.
Michelle Barard. Michelle Barard. Oh, thank you.
Hello, my name is Michelle Barard. I live at 4694 North Lane Canyon Road. I'm getting a little nervous. I just want, you've heard everybody say what we want over there, how we feel, and it's true, but I want you to just take a moment and just step back with me into mine and my life partners. Sold the home in California, wanted to live in a rural area, fell in love with the Golden Valley. Imagine, you sell your home, you leave your kids and your grandkids in a state that we're four hours from just to see our grandkids. But we wanted the opportunity to have peace, quiet, look at the stars. Anything was possible out here. And we were so thrilled, and we were sad at the same time leaving. We've been, I've heard several times, I've seen signs, "Don't turn us into California." The main push for us to say, "That's it. We retire." I'm a retired nurse, he's retired safety inspector, operating engineer. We left, we come here, and we hear, "Do not take, turn us into California." We didn't want to bring California here. We didn't want to have California here. We left California for a reason. Across from our home, they were building three times the size of a development across. They bought government land and they took, and moved into the forestry and everything in Southern California. But they had, the developers, when they had it, they started off, we knew exactly where the fire, where the firehouse was gonna be, what they were doing and everything was laid out, and here it is. We don't have that here, so we're scared. We don't know what you're gonna do, where you're gonna put the, all the other stuff. But needless to say, just put yourself in my shoes. I thought I found the perfect state, the perfect town to retire and live the rest of my life out here. And now, it's, we don't know what's gonna happen. We're right there, and I don't mean to get that emotional, but we have to now think about finding another state that maybe, you know, to leave. So I just wanted you to take that consideration. A lot of us have come from different states to retire here.
Thank you. Cynthia Anthony. Arthur Ramos, you're on deck.
Good morning, and thank you for time to speak with you. My name is Cynthia Anthony. I live at 4831 Rainbow Avenue in Chloride, Arizona. I have lived there since 1991. My gravest concern regarding the approval of the Dorado subdivision proposed in the general plan is water. I live in Chloride, whoops, sorry. I live in Chloride. Will we get our water from the same aquifer that will provide water to the Dorado subdivision proposed in the general plan? Parts of Kingman also get its water from the same aquifer. In 2016, the Mojave County Board of Supervisors was so concerned about the water supply that they contacted the Arizona Department of Water Resources, expressing their concern regarding the annual water deficit and future additional development. Since then, there have been numerous years of drought, plus a local entity has purchased a large number of acres, developing them into agricultural-producing properties. This entity has also drilled many wells, further depleting our aquifer. The City of Kingman also has drilled at least one well, taking water from our aquifer. Your first responsibility should be to your current constituents and their needs. Water is our most important resource. Please fully consider what impact your vote has on Golden Valley and its surrounding neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Arthur Ramos. Tina Ronan, you're on deck. Hope I said that right.
Good morning to everybody. Arthur Ramos is my name. I live in Golden Valley on Ografria. And I still oppose this Dorado project, and you know, we, he, he got so close. He came halfway, you know? He decided that one full square mile he'll build into one acre lots, so that's halfway there. He can decide to do the other square mile that same way, or just come back in 10 years and try again, you know? So if you guys just keep it the way it, well, to one acre lots only, and then in 10 years, when we go for another 10-year plan, he can try again. He, he told us at one time up here, it was gonna take five to 10 years to get it done anyway. So, once he gets that one area, one acre lots, all fixed up and settled the way that he likes it, we, you guys and the community sees what, how good it is and what went wrong and improvements that he can make, then he could work on the other half. And although I appreciate a history lesson anytime I can get it, I do resent being called a socialist that wants no improvements. That's out of line. So, uh, that's not the case. We want responsible growth in the community, and I don't think it's too much to ask. So, like many others, like almost everyone in front of me has said, "We bought here for a reason," and that reason is what it was last year, you know? Uh, to, to put this in, uh, I mean, this 10-year plan is pretty important for the whole, the whole county. So we should just get it done. I mean, make it one acre lots minimum and just move on. There's another 10-year plan coming, so I don't see what the holdup is really. Let's just set it to one acre. And about the building along 68, I thought we had, we decided that's what we wanted to do, all the commercial along 68. I'm, I'm not sure what the gentleman was referring to or talking about. Anyway, please help us out over here. Thank you.
Tim, Tim Ronan. George Loyah, you're on deck.
Good morning, Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Martin, Borelli, Gold, and Letman. Uh, my name's Tim Ronan. I, uh, property and landowner in Golden Valley, and I'd like to refer back to Mr. Robinson. No disrespect, but most of ours are gonna be in heaven. Why push it now? Um, we all like it. We consider it heaven now. So, uh, that's why a lot of us live out there. You heard the lady that's a retired nurse. Um, I'm a Mojave Valley Fire Department Captain, Medic. I've been there for over 18 years. Um, I drive 45 minutes to work, um, and my wife also drives about a half hour. Um, I've been in Mojave County for 21 years, 10 of that in Golden Valley. Uh, I also worked as a POC, which is Paid and Qualified Firefighter, for when they need it in Golden Valley. Um, staffing's been an issue, as everybody's heard. I've spoken before about this for years. Um, I stopped being a POC at Golden Valley because my department got so busy with mandatory, um, you know, positions where you're basically told, after you've been there for two days, "Hey, we don't have anybody to work. You're staying." So, um, very understanding families on that. With Golden Valley's staffing, uh, when I left there, it was about two years ago that I was working there as a POC. Uh, we ran an average of about 1,500 calls a year. Uh, since that time, two years have passed, uh, last year they hit almost 3,000. This year, they're on par for close to that, so that shows you how busy it's gotten. Um, I see 68 also from my property. Milky Way's a horrible intersection for that. Um, and if Golden Valley gets a fire with their staffing, they have two at Station 12, two at Station 13, and three, which includes the captain, who's also battalion chief, at Station 11. If there's a structure fire, all three stations respond, um, which leaves who's gonna go to the medicals, or if there's another fire. Now, they do their best to break away, and it's kind of put in a priority thing, but you heard the gentleman that spoke here when we just met, I believe it was a week and a half, two weeks ago, about waiting 35 minutes for his, uh, I think it was his aunt with a stroke. It's not Golden Valley Fire's fault. It comes with money and staffing that all reverts back into that. And seeing these big subdivisions starting to go in that area before that's even in place is a huge, huge red flag. Um, it's not protecting our citizens that live out there, um, that we serve and we protect. So I had two questions that, one was brought up. I spoke with you, Ms. Supervisor Letman, about the fact that if these, uh, this plan isn't approved, it goes back to the old plan, right? And that basically Engel Homes gets the old plan of making it massive. I'd like to see where that's at because I haven't been able to find anything in regards to where it's, it developed, it goes back to the old plan, which, you know, it's much more than, um, were you gonna address?
We'll make, we'll make a note of that. We'll make sure that that gets addressed today.
Okay. That was all I had.
Thank you, sir. George Loyah. Patrick Devlin, you're on deck. Thank you.
Supervisors, I'm happy to be here in front of you. Uh, we can settle this right now if Engel Homes would just build us one acre properties on his properties, and we don't have to worry about that anymore. That's all we, that's all I have to say.
Patrick Devlin. Ryan Burke, you're on deck.
Hi, um, my name's Patrick Devlin. My family and I live at 2282 South Verde Road in Golden Valley, and, uh, we, um, we just want to keep it rural. We like it how it is. Um, we're afraid of increased traffic and light pollution as well as flooding. We have a big wash drain through our property, and, uh, the flood zone goes near where our house is, and we're afraid of additional houses making that worse. So, um, we just ask that you, um, keep, keep the future developments at a suburban and low-density land use. And, uh, um, I mean, I believe, uh, responsible development is, you know, maybe 500 extra people in, in 10 years, not, not 20,000 extra people. I think that changed the nature of the town, so, uh, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ryan Burke. Mr. Burke, it looks like you've had several people donate their time, so we're gonna give you 10 minutes to speak. Okay.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for having me here. Basically, my presentation is do growth right by protecting our rural way of living from what I call urban sprawl. Um, I'm from LA, I am where Riverside, and they built 5,000 homes right on the hill behind me, and my cul-de-sac was the only access point. So, that, and that's before Oregon, the wineries. You, I've, I've spoke about that before. Anyway, um, today's presentation is really to read into the public record and educate some of the newer board members of the history of Golden Valley's growth plans and mineral park mining, and they mentioned it, but in my presentation, Mineral Park is now coming back online, or they're already online. And, um, in 2014, their well was dropping three and a half foot per year for a total of 25 foot. So they have water rights that probably grandfathered before anything that Engel Homes does. So approving 3,500 new homes is really not a good idea, um, with the mine in, taken into account. And another thing is especially increasing the water allocations for, from 402 to 4,000 allocations, and GVID is not really a good way of dealing with this problem with water. And another thing, I've spoke to a lot of Golden Valley residents, and in GVID, a lot of people forget or don't know that it was a citizen board of directors that managed the Golden Valley Improvement District for the water, and now the Mojave County manages it. Um, many residents are, are talking this, you know, I don't live in that zone. I live on, you know, off of Chino, but, uh, they're, they're talking about regaining controls, so the citizens are actually gonna be on the board like it used to be for many years. And then also, there's some concern that in the 2025 general plan, the wording from 2006 general plan and 2015 general plan pertaining to Golden Valley was, was thrown out. And so that's kind of confusing. That was just... so, that's kind of confusing. That was just kind of put on us about two weeks ago and trying to get up to speed with that. It's been kind of difficult. And so, and then I'll go to the next section. Golden Valley's unique history, it's a love of small homestead, animal husbandry, non-urban land space to be stewards of the land, and especially water usage. That's why I moved to Golden Valley. It's my third time to move to try to be in a rural, I mean, area that's going to stay rural. And suburban developers attract also a high-density urban-type people. And when flooding occurs, their first thing is pick up the phone, call the county and fix this flooding problem on the roads. But the majority of the roads in Golden Valley are not maintained by Mojave County. In fact, recently, it's come to light that Mojave County only maintains 2,089 miles of roads in, for, in a total of 8,489 miles of roads. So, when things get tough, you know, the flooding on my road wasn't too bad, but I have a tractor. I have three other neighbors immediate, we all have tractors. People that suburb-type people that move in or urban people, they don't have, they have a lawnmower, but it's not a tractor. And so, they're going to be totally reliant, and the neighbors around them are not going to be able to help the roads that are all around the different areas to help those new neighbors, the urban neighbors. So, and then just meeting many of the Golden Valley residents, hounding all my flyers and stuff, we just all really want to preserve at least a one-acre home for all Golden Valley, which is all laid out in the 2006 plan. And it goes back for 20, 30, 40 years, that the original 1.1 acre envision meant for what Golden Valley should be. And so, in closing, I'm just throw out, please just remove Golden Valley from the general plan in 2025. Pass the general plan without us, without it. And then we, that gives us time to work this out without having to hold up everybody else. And basically, that's, and then just vote no on Dorado Development. That's the main thing. So, thank you so much for your time. Have a good day.
Connie Hulse, did I say that right? Thank you. Connie, it looks like somebody also donated their time to you. So it could be five minutes like the others. State your name and address to the record, please.
Hello, my name is Connie Hulse, and I live at 4455 North Alpina Road in Golden Valley, across the street from the Dorado Development. I'm here again to state my opposition to the inclusion of the Dorado Plan in the general plan. We have all been here over and over again, but last week was the worst. I again took time off work to attend the workshop. I expected the board to engage with other stakeholders on the plan, but it was more of the same. All of the Golden Valley got up and shared all of their concerns. Then the developer got up and say, I wanted to look like this, and then you all postponed. No discussion with staff or stakeholders. For instance, public safety is a major concern for residents. Where was the Sheriff's Department so you could ask them their opinion on how they would handle the huge increase in public safety needs? Transportation and roads? Where were the people from Public Works on how the added road traffic, roads and maintenance would affect things? Highway 68 is a major concern and is an ADOT road. Where was the representative from ADOT to address what their plan would be? Water? Where was the administration engineer for Golden Valley Improvement District to speak on water? You seem to take the word of the developer that the water assurance is from ADWR, but there doesn't, that doesn't address the infrastructure of the system. How would adding all of those homes affect or strain the existing pipelines and infrastructure? Fire response? Where was the representative from Golden Valley Fire on their thoughts and plan for servicing this huge increase? Ambulance response? There is no ambulance in Golden Valley. Several years ago, Golden Valley Fire tried to start ambulance services within their jurisdiction, but were denied. So where was the representative from the ambulance provider to speak to what they would do once a new town is built? Because that's what the developer is doing. They are essentially building a new town without any infrastructure for the town. Flood control? Was the flood control manager giving their plan for flood control once this town is plopped in the middle of our area? We all know that this is going to dramatically affect the flow of water simply with existing. But where there were no experts there to answer any questions, you posed no questions to anybody. It's like you don't care. Your Development Service Director stated that the reason they put the other areas wanted what they wanted in the, and left out what Golden Valley wanted was because the other areas did not have opposition. My question to you and to them, in Golden Valley, the vast majority of us want one acre minimum lots and to preserve the agricultural culture we have, yet instead of going with what the majority wanted, you went with one developer who doesn't even live in Golden Valley and never will. He never will. How does that even make sense? It doesn't make sense. It stinks. You have an opportunity today to show the rural people that live in your rural county, that they are important and that they are valued as much as your incorporated areas. Please do the right thing and protect rural living. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Tyler Engel? And Travon Pennington, you're on deck.
Tyler Engel, 2800 Wallapay Mountain Road. Thank you, Chairman and Supervisors. Based on a lot of the comments, people think we haven't adjusted our plans or anything. You look at the current general plan, there's zero one-acre lots in this 1,400-acre area, zero. And we've, keep making changes to lower the density. So now, more than half of it is, is acre lots. And so, we've moved as far as we can in that direction so that we can still develop an affordable housing section, which does have to be higher density in order to divide the development costs by a certain number where the houses would be affordable for, for those that want to buy and live in the area that we all love. I did want to address the water because that keeps coming up. The Board of Supervisors in April of 2024, acting as the Board of GVID, did memorialize the amount of allocations from the state. Initially, the state gave 1,400 allocations, which converts to 6,200 service connections. Then in addition to that, the state granted another 950 acre feet of, of water for future use. So that's reserved right now, approved by the state for future use. All that has to be done to convert that to connections is for the infrastructure to be put in, which we'd be happy to do. In that same meeting, they approved policies for a new developer to come in and would have to pay for a water study, pay for the infrastructure to basically access these, these new connections that the water has already been reserved for. The Sacramento Valley Aquifer, according to the USGS, has more than double the water that the Wallapay Aquifer, the Kingman side of the mountain, has. And so, according to the state and USGS, there is water there. It is available, and they already have an allocation set aside specifically for GVID's future growth. Thanks.
Travon Pennington? Nicholas Diaz, you're on deck.
Travon Pennington, 2247 Mason Drive. As you guys know, about 18 months ago, we were denied rezone, right? And we were asked to participate in this general plan update process. And the rezoning is required, the reason the rezoning is required, so we can engage an engineer. And it's a numbers game, right? We need to know the, the allowed density so that we can coordinate with an engineering firm to design a subdivision, do a hydrology study, right, that we'll be able to hand to GVID in the Mojave County to do an analysis that, the result of that is going to tell us what infrastructure we're going to have to invest and pay for in GVID. Also, we have intentions of working with a sewer company. And right now, preliminary estimates of what that investment would be over the life of the project is probably 17 to $20 million invested in a regional-sized sewer plant out in Golden Valley. We also, it's a numbers game, right? We need to get a rezone so that we can give those numbers to a traffic engineer. That traffic study will be reviewed not only by ADOT, but also by Mojave County. And that will dictate the improvements that we're going to have to perform and pay for over the life of this project. And just to give a, like a horizon, right, the things that I just talked about, if we were to receive a rezone approval tomorrow, the realistic timeframe is probably a three or four years from that point of just working through the logistics, right? Not turning a shovel, not moving dirt, is just to be able to get those approvals. So I just wanted to give kind of a realistic timeframe of kind of what we're talking about and the tasks that are out in front of us. We intend to build a beautiful subdivision and follow the rules. Thank you.
Nicholas Diaz? Blake Bryan, you're on deck.
Nicholas Diaz, 1445 Aquian Road, Kingman. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Supervisors. Just want to kind of reiterate, same thing that's kind of already been said. We did start this process back in 2024, April, actually, of 2024. You Supervisors recommended for us to go ahead and go through the general plan process after the rezon was designed, denied when we tried, when we submitted the application to basically conform to what the existing general plan was. So, we have been diligently working to try to do that. And then as far as like concessions, we have made concessions. So it's, as far as, as far as on the opposition side, yes, it's, they want one acre lots. So, we basically provided a one-acre border around that. That was our first concession. We kept everything else the same, but in a one-acre border around the entire project. Basically, it goes 250 feet in. It wasn't mal-intent. It was because that's what the surrounding community wanted. So we were giving them what they wanted. So it's across the street. It would be exactly what they asked for, one acre lots. That was the intent. So, I just wanted to point that out. They didn't like it. Their concession to that was, we want one acre lots. Okay? So then what we ended up doing is, we kept that same border. We removed all the medium density. Same thing, that was out of the concession. Their concession to that was, no, we want one acre lots. So, again, we went back again. And now more than half of our entire project is one acre lots. Their concession to that is, no, we want one acre lot. So we have been trying to work, and we've been changing our plans to try to conform to that, and try to be reasonable. As far as, I know a lot of things that come up too is, just like the Fire Department, a member that worked with Fire Department there just kind of spoke to the increased calls. Well, as we all know, where do, where does the Fire Department get their funds from? Typically, property taxes. So, the way they get funds is housing. And then our goal here is to provide affordable housing. So obviously, one acre lots equals less affordability because the infrastructure is, that burden is put on the developer, not on the county, not on the taxpayers, on the developer. So the more houses we can't have, the more we can divide those development costs, in turn, being able to provide more affordable housing. So one acre lots provides less affordability. Yes, we do think there's a market for that there, but the average Kingmanite, can they afford one acre lots? I mean, in reality, that's something you'd have to weigh out. But one acre lots equals higher costs, more difficult for entry-level position. Thank you.
Blake Bryan? Penny Holden, you're on deck.
Good morning, gentlemen, and everybody else. At the last meeting, it was alleged that member or members of the board have or have taken campaign contributions from the owner of Engel Holmes. For the record and complete transparency, can we get an answer to that? Is there anyone on the Board of Supervisors that has received any type of donation from Engel Holmes, the company, or their employees? Next, I would like to, would also like to read sections of the Mojave County Personnel Policies Procedures, Introduction, Section D, Code of Ethics. A, employees are to maintain high standards of honesty, integrity, and impartiality for the proper and efficient conduct of county business. B, official positions shall not be used for personal gain, public influence, and confidential information shall not be used for personal advantage. C, employees shall avoid situations, creating an appearance of impropriety or conflict of interest, or that would tend to undermine the public trust. Want to drive that point home. Employees shall not accept or solicit directly or indirectly anything of economic value, such as a gift, gratuity, favor, entertainment, or loan that is or may appear to be designed to influence official conduct in any manner. So I would, so would voting to rezone land that would show favor towards Engel Holmes, is that impartial? Does that show integrity, honesty, respect for the public, courtesy, cooperation with the community? Does it avoid situations that create an appearance of impropriety or conflict of interest, or that would tend to undermine the public trust? What campaign contributions are perfectly legal, the general public sees them as a legal bribe for your vote. So again, I'm going to ask, is taking the campaign contributions from the owner of Engel Holmes or anyone from Engel Holmes, and then voting to rezone land that would show favoritism towards Engel Holmes impartial? Also, at the last meeting, two things stood out to me. I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus, but a council member made a joke about getting sued after somebody had brought it up. Class action lawsuits are how we, the people, fight back against the government. So, by all means. Two, one of you also stated that you would like to hear from more people from the community. And I'm going to call that a lie, okay? Because if you wanted to hear from more people of the community, you'd have these meetings at night. Gentlemen, it's we, the people, not we, Engel Holmes. Thank you.
Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, sir, if you want to look at campaign finance, contributions go up to the Election Department on the second floor. They'll give those to you, rather than painting the entire board with a broad brush. I would appreciate that. Thank you. You're done.
Thank you. Penny Holden? Jennifer Esposito, you're on deck.
Hi, Penny Holden, Kingman, Arizona. I'm, I don't live in Golden Valley, but I feel that I need to make this statement. I've been, received several requests from people to let you know. I was out in Scripps Ranch when Steve Robinson was getting signatures, trying to get people to agree to this development. So I want to put it on the record. Also, with that said, I think that each meeting that I come down here or I watch on TV, we're constantly getting rezoned, rezoned, rezoned. And I'm all for growth. I think we need growth, but we need the infrastructure to keep up to pace with it. We have a medical system here that is inadequate. It's six months to get in to see a doctor, or you've got to go to Vegas, then you've got to go to Phoenix. So we don't have the, the medical facility to keep us. The roads are in horrible condition. I got a new car, and I've had two financial alignments done in the last year on my car and stuff. We also have, the crime has increased here. We don't have the police to do this. And our water supply, you know, we keep bringing up the water supply. If you want to do the growth, then let's keep up with the infrastructure to do it. I live on Wallapay. It takes me five or six lights to get through Wallapay onto 66 now because of the cars. And we haven't even started with the growth that's going up there and stuff. Not get me started on that because I tried to talk to Mr. Martin about that, and he don't know what I'm talking about with the growth up there. So, I don't know who to address my concerns with because he's their supervisor, and he don't know what I'm talking about and stuff. So, my thing is, I'm all for your growth, but I hope that you guys take in consideration of what the people want, and do it with a little bit of forethought of the traffic. When you put 3,000 homes, you're going to have at least 6,000 vehicles. And consider that for the people. Thank you. Thank you.
Jennifer Esposito. Ms. Esposito, you've had several people donate time, so we're going to give you 10 minutes as well.
I'm sorry, how much?
10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer Esposito, 3211 East Navally Avenue, Kingman, candidate for District Four County Supervisor in 2028, and editor, publisher, writer for the Mojave Free Press newspaper. In the immortal words of Captain John Paul Jones, "I have not yet begun to fight." And I think that the people that you're hearing from today feel the same way. Now, on October 27th, I sent an email to Mr. Davis. I did not get a response, maybe it just got lost in his box, I know he's a busy guy. But I think that we deserve answers to these questions, so I'm going to read you what I asked. I said, "You stated to the supervisors that the other counties calculate at least two-thirds of the members of the board, quote, 'as a percentage rather than a fraction.' What is the case law that determined a percentage should be used rather than the clear and unambiguous fractional body count that the plain language of the statute states?" I know that everyone else is doing it, okay, I got that part, but I don't have the case law that says that that is the legal way to calculate how many votes this board needs to pass a general plan. Additionally, I said, "What is your legal basis for determining the ARS 11-805 Section L, which states, 'All subsequent considerations of a new or revised plan must comply with the procedures prescribed by this article,' magically somehow does not apply to notifying all statutory stakeholders that a new and different draft of the 2025 general plan is being presented for a vote? The 2025 general plan has been changed since April of this year to include a subdivision on the Utah border. How do you justify not notifying Utah and giving that county and state 60 days notice to weigh in if they so choose? The statute requires that newspapers of that area be notified, and since there is no development in that area, I'm assuming that you would have to notify, run it in the newspaper on the, on the other side of the Utah border. That's just my opinion." I also said, also, "The original resolution, number 2006-657A, for the Golden Valley Plan, carved out and temporarily changed the land use designation for the Dorado Plan, currently owned by High Desert Land Holdings and Resurrected Properties, AKA Angle Homes, and purchased through tax lien foreclosure, was incorporated into the 2015 general plan with staff oversight at fault for failure to include the resolution in the previous general plan and recommend it for, quote, 'reduction in scope or rescission,' which is what that, that Dorado Plan said. What is your legal opinion on the clear intent of the duly passed resolution, now that it has come to light? As none of the requirements set forth in the resolution have been met, should the board vote to rescind or reduce the Dorado Plan prior to voting on the 2012 draft general plan? If they do not, then do the requirements set forth apply to the new and different proposal for Dorado, such as preparing a, quote, 'natural resources management plan? If the new property owners must meet these requirements, then how long would Angle Homes have to complete them? Also, on page four, item number five of the resolution, it says that the, quote, 'The Mojave County 208 Water Quality Management Plan was amended to include wastewater treatment provisions for each phase of development.' So what are those provisions, and do they now apply to the new and different subdivision proposed by the new property owners? Lastly, on page four, number nine, is it your legal opinion where it says, "The area plan refers to the Dorado Plan and not the Golden Valley Plan for the purpose of satisfying the requirements set forth in the resolution? I look forward to your response." I know that it's staff's opinion that, you know, satisfying the requirements of at least building one spec home or one village counts for the entire valley. They're counting that as the plan, meaning the Golden Valley Plan, not the Dorado Plan. Now, we had a Golden Valley Plan, and that Golden Valley Plan was very specific about one acre lots. And all we're asking for is that we get back our Golden Valley Plan. Now, I know that our current supervisor said that his, he would like to refer this back to planning and zoning, but I would like to remind everybody, they're only an advisory board. And I asked him, why legally, what case law, case precedent satisfies that requirement that it must be sent back to planning and zoning, that you guys can't just make a motion to do what you want and pass it with or without the Golden Valley Plan carved out separately, which statutorily you're allowed to do? And he said, "Refer to my counsel." So I hope that Mr. Davis will explain why it has to go back to planning and zoning once again, and why you, the board, with this decision can't just make the motion the way you want. But again, because it's changed, we need a legal opinion on whether or not stakeholders, like the State Land Trust and things, need to be re-notified when the plan changes. That's important. It's important to follow the law. I've read the entire thing. I know at least one or two of you have probably read the entire 11805 statute. We don't have a housing crisis. I'm extremely disappointed that the real estate bubble has burst, because I wanted my husband to sell our home and move everything permanently onto our Golden Valley property instead of driving back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. But now our home isn't going to be worth as much, because the entire state no longer has a need for the additional housing. And I'd like to remind this board that you change the planning and zoning for the auxiliary dwelling units to, that's a statewide statute. Now, everybody who owns an acre or more can have an attached and two attached auxiliary dwelling units. Everybody on an acre less can also add an attached dwelling unit. We're getting 270 something Angle Homes directly across from Ship's Estates. I think we need to just forget about Dorado until the next 10-year plan, until Angle Homes can show that they can build the homes they've already been granted permission for with a proper sewage system and sell those homes, and that there's a need for those homes, because Privada, or whatever the other thing is down there on the old Jim Rhodes place, they're going to be building several hundred homes. We're going to get a total of 600 homes. We don't need 3,000 or 4,000 more. Now, the White Hills area is getting, has been approved for thousands of homes. There is no housing shortage. I don't know where this idea that we need more affordable homes, every time I drive to my Golden Valley property, I drive past the Angle Homes subdivision that they have in, in North Kingman Butler area. I drive past it and I think to myself, I, I grew up that way. That is the last thing that I want to see in Golden Valley. I mean, our home in Butler is like 12,000 square feet, I think. We're lucky enough to have a double lot and it's not big enough. But the, there's an attitude, well, if you don't like it, you should just buy more property around you. Well, I already have 4.7 acres and I'm surrounded by undeveloped land, I don't think I could buffer that anymore. And whether or not there is more water in the Sacramento Valley aquifer than there is in the Wallopi aquifer is irrelevant. The GVID wells are showing a depletion every single year. And that's without adding the 600 homes that are approved and the 3,000 to 4,000 more that are being proposed. Now, I, I know that nobody on planning and zoning is a Golden Valley property owner, and I'm pretty sure that none of you are either, so none of this affects you the way it affects all of us. I, I think that Don might have a relative that lives in Golden Valley or something, but I haven't seen him come and speak about this. But the reality is, is there are legal issues that need to be addressed, because we want to make sure that we do this right and we do this property. Everybody should have read that statute a long time ago. I realize that three of you weren't on the board then, that's not your fault. You know, we've, we've talked about all the things that we want one acre. You know what? I hate to call out BS when I see it, but I, I do. And the idea that Angle has compromised in any way, shape, or form by putting a one acre boundary around certain parts of their new proposal is utter BS, because that just makes them the people in the 300-foot boundary, and it deprives the right of the people wearing the 300-foot shirts from signing a petition requiring a supermajority vote. And Mr. Robinson is full of BS as well, because the only property rights you have are those with the zoning when you bought the property. Angle bought this property on a big fat tax lien foreclosure at 36-acre agricultural. That's the only right they have. I think we're being exceptionally generous to say, "We'd be okay if you built one acre properties." Or if you don't want to invest that in our community, then sell them off individually as one acre lots and let someone else develop them that way. I think that we're, we would be generous at saying five acres, but we're willing to go down to one acre, because that has always been the vision. It doesn't matter what some California land developer wanted in the 1960s or 70s when Golden Valley was empty, more or less. You know, this, this is 2025, and we're talking about the growth for the next 10 years. And you guys were, the board was supposed to have a procedure manual that specified statutorily how public input would be weighed. The whole purpose was for public input. And at every point, the voices of the majority of the public have been ignored. I'm asking you today to, however you need to make this motion, however you need to make it happen, Dorado needs to revert back to the old land designation. Thank you.
Philip Robinson, you're on deck.
Can you get that up on the screen, please?
We get the screen up. Thank you.
Okay, Danielle Oli, Golden Valley. I just want to thank you for being patient today and listening to everybody. I know a lot of people normally concede their time to me, but I've said everything that I can possibly say. And today, I just want to put my words into a visual. And what I have for you up on the screen right here is an example of a development in Kingman. And what you can see over here, these are acre-sized lots, and then directly across the street, those are 6,500 square foot lots. And that's considered low-density residential under Mojave County guidelines. So even if you put an acre buffer, it does nothing, it does nothing to secure our way of living. And I just want to ask, like, the problem that I see is the current zoning. There's nothing in between that I can find in our zoning ordinance and in the general plan that shows where you go from suburban to low-density residential, because suburban is acre to five acre lots. Low-density residential is three to five homes per acre, and the smallest lot size can be 6,000 square foot lots. So where's the middle ground that developers can come in and say, "Hey, we have an idea, maybe we'll do two homes per acre." But right now, we have to live in fear based off of their calculations on their profit that they say, "Well, we might do three homes, we might do five homes." And that's not really their problem either, but it's not our problem either. We need some kind of protection and we need some kind of a clear understanding on how our neighborhood doesn't end up like this. And based off of the track record, if you go and drive through the current subdivisions that are being developed, that's what it looks like. And that's not what we signed up for when we bought into our property rights 20, 30, five years ago. So that's all I have to say, and I just want to say that I'm so proud of everybody who came and spoke today. This has been a long, ongoing battle, and we're not ready to start. There's more people joining us in forces than people are fizzling out. And so I, I hope you can consider, you know, what we're trying to protect and do. And Terry Merrill, you are a champion. She did go door-to-door and gathered more signatures than anybody, and going door-to-door is not fun in Golden Valley. It's actually pretty scary, and I don't see the developers going door-to-door trying to win support for their subdivision. So thank you, that's all I have.
Philip Robinson. Scotty McClure, you're on deck.
Morning, Chairman and Supervisors. My name is Philip Robinson. I'm from Golden Valley. I'm going to bring you up on some history. Golden Valley, I've been here for 32 years, November 4th. I'm proud to be out in Golden Valley. I've seen it grow, and it's awesome. I'm not for this. We've always, always wanted one acre lots. From the very first planning, general plan that I went to was a one acre. My second meeting was a one acre with streetlights, which was, nah, not even. And then the third one was this this year, me and Holtry, Mr. Holtry, talked a little bit, and I asked him, "How come you guys are denying us our one acre lot?" He said, "We combined, combined Golden Valley and Kingman together." That's wrong. That's totally wrong. And then I did two economic developments with, I can't remember her name, with the director of that. She even stated that one acre lots, we've always wanted the corridor, the I-40, we all want that, the I-40, 68, 66, up to the gun range, and out 93. We've never denied that, people, never. I've been here 32 years. I might as well say 32. I've been coming out here for 35 years. I got out of the military in 88, spent my 10 years in there, and I got hurt. And now, here's another battle for me. We got to end this. We got to put Golden Valley as one acre lot, finally. No more, no more. This is enough. For 32 years, 30 years at least, we've been battling this. No more, please. Thank you.
Scotty from Bullhead. Ron, was this 1929 decision in the Supreme Court before or after we stole all this property and land from the Indians? You know, I really don't have a dog in this fight, but I drive through Golden Valley all the time, and I've sat through hours and hours and hours because we have public comment at last. I went through Golden Valley in 1979, was the first time, when it's still a two-lane road. I want to be at the dedication of the first stoplight on Highway 68. I mean, we have them all, all year long down in Bullhead City. They didn't have one in 1979, but geez, Golden Valley, you're missing out on all these opportunities to have all these streetlights, every one of them. Somebody wanted to know about donations from Angle Homes? Well, since I ran against Rick Letman, I looked up his stuff. It's right upstairs, public information, and he filled it out. He got $2,500 from Angle Homes. That's the max. So I don't know, Mr. Davis, if he needs to rescuse himself, that's up to you, I guess, or somebody to ask him. He also got $5,000 from the Board of Realtors down in Phoenix, and then Hildy got him another $3,000 from the Board of Realtors in Phoenix. That's $8,000. You know how many cities he wants to make, Mojave Valley, Fort Mojave, Colorado City's got his nose stuck in that business up there now. Southwest Realty in Bullhead, they had a whole bunch of their people, their Realtors, give them a little couple hundred dollars out all the time. There's all these, I don't know, I didn't add it all up, but he's got quite a bit of money donated to his campaign, which is all legal. Nobody went over the limits. But anyway, he did get $2,500 from Angle Homes.
That's our last speaker. Mr. Davis, there, there were, I saw you taking copious notes over there with, with some of the speakers. Is there anything that you'd like to address that was brought up during the public comment?
Mr. Chair, I will start with where it says that the general plan reverts back. That's in Section L and M, if you read them, well, in L, if you read it, and then M, if you read it with L, that if there's no plan adopted, then the current plan remains in place until a new plan is adopted or until the current plan is reaffirmed. Some counties throughout the country, because every, pretty much every municipality, county has a comprehensive plan of some sort, some of them will say, "We're happy with, with the way it is the last 10 years, in the same direction," and will just reaffirm their standing plan and change the one to a two and make it the 25 general plan. So that, that's where it says that that keeps going. I would, as I have told the board before, 11805I says that any changes made by the board have to go down to planning and zoning. This is really a planning and zoning document. This is a planning document. So I've heard, I heard the term zoning brought up a lot today. This doesn't impact anyone's current zoning. It impacts what someone might be able to do down the line. But then they can do a minor plan amendment, change their parcel's land use designation, and then they'd be good to go. And then, the last thing I'll say, just generally, is a, as a point for the county attorney's office, our client, our only client, is the government of Mojave County. And that is the only group of people I can give any legal advice to, ever, as a county attorney. That is, that's just the rules I am required to follow as a lawyer. That is, that's all the areas I wish to address.
Let me ask one question. I don't think you would address the percentage slash fraction.
So, what I had said on Thursday was that you, mathematically, you can't get 2/3 out of a five-member board. You can multiply, you can get a common denominator. And I would really avoid, like to avoid doing fractions in public. But the easiest way to quantify it is that percentage in a decimal and a fraction are all different ways of writing the same thing. So the answer to, once again, is to adopt the general plan is 4 fifths. To send an amendment back to planning and zoning just requires 3 fifths.
And if the proposed general plan revision does not pass, does the entire process start over again?
Yes. If there's a motion-
And it's gone on, it's gone on for 22 months already, correct? So if it fails to pass, then the whole process starts over again, the whole 22-month process?
Yes. The way, sorry, sorry to interrupt. The way that I interpret the law is that if the board makes suggested changes, and those changes are eventually ratified through the process, it's the same plan, just making alterations. If the board takes that final motion to adopt, and the motion to adopt either comes less than four votes, it fails altogether, then yes, L kicks in and we start over.
All right. I think it's important for everybody to understand that. Comments? Discussion? Supervisor Martin, you want to kick us off?
Well, I don't know if this is the appropriate time.
Discussion?
Anybody else has got to talk about it. But I got three things that I don't like in being proposed, and I would make a motion to change this. And understanding that if I make these motions, they've got to go back to planning and zoning to be addressed.
Can you inform the rest of the board what those three things are before you make a motion?
Okay. What I'm concerned with is the Dorado proposal, Golden Valley, designating Highway 68 as a commercial corridor, and removal of the Plan Policy 1211 from our document, from our general plan document. Those are three items that I want to address.
Other comments? Supervisor Burley. Okay, who would you like to bring up?
Somebody represented from Angle Homes.
With somebody from Angle Homes, spokesperson, come up to the podium. Go ahead, Supervisor Burley.
Thank you. Sir, you, I've heard it said that you have agreed to go, to stick to one-acre lots, but then there's also the smaller acre lots. At what phase in the project do you plan on going from the one-acre to the smaller?
I want to understand the question. So if you could, our Phase 1 that we would like to build is the low-density lots. So we, right now, we, for conversation, we have 1,480 acres. Two sections, a section here, a section here, and a quarter section here. Through this process, we've designated this northwesterly section as all one-acre lots, right? Around the perimeter, most of the perimeter of the other section, and the quarter section around the perimeter, anything that was across the street from one-acre lots, we've chosen to take that and show it as 250-foot deep. But that designation would be one-acre lots across the street from one-acre lots. We've eliminated the medium density that was, there was hundreds of acres of median density, we've removed that. And so our Phase 1 would be involved, years from now, involved developing a sewer system, and investing quite a bit of money into GVID, and then building a Phase 1 after those improvements are done, that is, would be low-density residential, approximately four to five years from now.
I'm not a builder or developer, just, so just bear with me. So the way, the way I see this is you're going to put in the infrastructure first before you start building property, homes.
That's how it works.
You can put the roads, the sewer, the water, all that infrastructure in first, before you start putting down slabs, right?
Yeah, the planning associated with is no small task, right? Many, many years, and much money spent in the planning stage, and the process of submitting those documents to county, sometimes ADOT, sometimes state agencies, getting feedback, probably taking that feedback, having to modify plans and changes and directives. And so, yeah, I'm trying to accurately depict what that process, what I, what we think that process will look like, and the proper amount of time to get through that process.
So it takes a lot of proper prior planning?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gold, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a long list of things. Do you want to go through them?
Yeah, let's do that.
Do you want to wrap this into one motion to send it back to planning and zoning, or you want to renew the thing?
Depending upon what everybody's concerns are, we could do one motion, we could do several.
Okay. If you go to item, Policy Item 6-1, which on the original one is on page 41, but everything has different page numbers. That policy gives the county engineer may establish an ascenic route signing policy. I'm concerned that, I think those kind of policies should go to the Board of Supervisors and not be the county engineer. On page 45, paragraph 3, the word says date. It should be data. So that's in the third paragraph, on the fourth line, middle of the line. Item 9.2, which is on page 48 on the original, talks about that the county should promote alternative energy. It reads, "The county should encourage the development of beneficial renewable energy production facilities in conductive locations that are compatible with any existing and adjacent development." I think we need to add the word, "if the power is to stay in the county." I'm not interested in being an energy farm for Southern California. If you go to Item 10.1, should have flagged all this stuff. That might be on 48 also. It is. Policy 10.1, "The county may consider adopting and establish energy code for new buildings." I don't think that adopting an energy code is necessary in the general plan. I believe the International Building Code has already done that. And I don't think that the government should tell the people to do things that they already do themselves. There's not, people that build homes in the area do not build under insulated homes, because it is hotter than hell in most of the county. It would not make economic sense. If you choose to build a house with no insulation, have at it. Have a good time in August. Then it goes on in Policy 10.2, "Through the evaluation of development proposals, the county may advise applicants of potential energy conservation techniques." I don't really think that that's the job of the county, to advise people on energy techniques. I think there, it should be given them a thumbs up or a thumbs down on how they choose to build that. If they want to do something, you can kind of pick, that gets picked up in, down in Policy 10.4. We want, if we want to advise people of things, we should do some research and show them some options for energy savings, not necessarily review their plan and make suggestions. Policy 10.4 says, "The county should incorporate energy-efficient designs into materials in new county facilities." I think we should consider that. I think we need to insert the word "consider" between "should" and "incorporate," because if they don't pencil out, folks, they're really not worth the effort. All it does is drive the cost of projects up with, if the pay, if you have a 100-year payback, it's probably not worthwhile than a 50-year building. So on page 75 of the original document, this is where the county begins to master plan things. I don't know that we should be involved in master planning a county. I think it's a big area. I think it's going to develop the way that people want it to develop. Master planning puts the government in the driver's seat of development and like the free market better. So on page 88 is 29.4. It talks about this 29.4, "Mojave County should not permit the division of land for any development purposes without an engineering study," that illustrating that the proposed structure would not be subject to 100-year storm, and the proposed development would not increase the base flood elevation provided by FEMA regulations. We should really only limit this to areas inside the floodplain, and should not be county-wide. On rezoning, if you go to 29.7, "Parcels created via the rezon process that are between 1 and 10 acres in size shall have sufficient space for a home site, wellhead, and septic system in a flood-free zone." I don't know that that's our, really something that we should control. A lot of times, you can't get those, a well and a septic on the same piece of property, on the sizes of property that we already let happen. A lot of that up in the wallabies, you can't have, you don't have the separation between a well and a septic tank. So if people are willing to haul wa, build, they want to haul water to a home, and so they can have a septic tank to get rid of their waste, I think they should be able to do that. 30.2. Land divisions should be limited in wooded areas that have high fire hazard potential where fire districts are not established. I don't know that that, that's really something that we should be regulating. If people want to build a home in a wooded area, I think that should be up to them. And if they build outside of a fire district, they're going to have to provide for that themselves. If you go down on that same page, 89, to HM6, "Consider developing hillside development guidelines to provide a defensible space around each structure and ensure dwellings are not on unstable soil or steep slopes in the path of fire." You're kind, when you start regulating defensible space, that, I think that ends up in a situation of overregulation. That's something that the property owner should do with his insurance company. Page 90. This is from, page 90 is our housing study, which was a waste of money, and didn't tell me anything that I couldn't already found out in a Google search. And I believe we spent $127,000 on that study. $147,000. I would just rip pages 90 and 91 out. On page 92, Policy 33.3, "Mojave County should identify substandard housing and promote the revitalization and rehabilitation of these structures." Once again, that's not the government's purpose to do that. I don't know what they're going to decide is substandard. I think that's for people to decide themselves, and the free market decides that also. I don't know what we, exactly are we going to bring cheerleaders out for revitalization? I'm not really sure what that all means. On, I don't think that one applies. Page 2. On page 111, it talks about the Lake Havasu Municipal Planning Organization, but it does not put anything about the Bullhead area municipal training, planning organization. So wherever it says Lake Havasu, we need to insert the Bullhead City area MPO into that. Let's see, Supervisor Martin already got 1211. I believe that the plan also calls for 1,800-acre projects require a general plan amendment. I think that's kind of high. It should probably be 640 acres. The maps are so small that you cannot read anything on the maps. The township of Yucca, which I could, I could throw a rock from one side to the other. The portion west of the interstate was included on the Golden Valley map. The portion on the east was, was in the map with Yucca and Dutch Flat, which made it awful hard to understand what was going on. I still can't tell, some of those color codes, I can't tell what's going on. And it also was mentioned that we were going to provide urban development standards into the township, which I believe mostly has A-zoning from territorial days. So hopefully, that won't, if- that won't, if, if the urban development standards apply to new subdivisions only, then it wouldn't apply, you wouldn't be having those people put sidewalks, streets. They have a water system. They're mostly on septic tanks. So hopefully that's not going to apply to that township because there's no, not going to be a subdivision in there. They're small lots from 1864, I believe. Which reminds me to Mr. McClure's comment. We took the Southwest from Spain and Mexico in a war and it was the Treaty of Guadalupe Haldago and the Gadsden Purchase that bought us the Southwest in Arizona. Sidebar comment. And that concludes my long-winded problems with the general plan.
Thank you. Supervisor Latman, comments?
I didn't know, is Danielle still here? Oh, she left. Okay. She had sent us a memo last week dated October 27th. It was called the Comprehensive Analysis of Prop 207 Relative to Proposed Angle Homes Dorado Project. It was a very good reading. I had some questions for her on this. I'll just wait until we have our next meeting.
Quick, Staff, Scott and Matt, would you come up to the podium, please? Got a couple of questions regarding just a few of the policies that Supervisor Gould called up. I'd like to have more information on that and why they're included. Policy 29.4 regarding the floodplain issues, can you give an overview of that and why that's being incorporated?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, when staff looked at the general plan update, a lot of it was left alone. Like Attorney Davis mentioned, if it wasn't broken, we're not trying to fix it. The other thing I'd like to mention is that the general plan is not a regulatory document. So anything that is in this document does not regulate land use within Mojave County. But it is a guiding policy for, or guiding document for regulation that does come in. So, for example, when we're looking at our drainage manual for our flood control division, then we'll look to this policy to make sure, okay, are we making sure that any development meets that hundred-year storm and that an engineer is looking at it if it is in a floodplain? I don't have the document in front of me. I'd have to take a closer look at that policy.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Supervisor Gould, but I think the current requirement was for unincorporated and incorporated, just countywide. And I asked the question because I know for a fact from discussions that we've had and another item I'm going to be bringing in December, that 80% of the floodplains issue, areas in Mojave County are in the unincorporated areas. So there is a distinction.
Correct. Yeah. And this would only be, this really does only apply currently for any structures within floodplains.
Okay. I think that answers my question there. On policy 29.7, he brought those up, where there may not be sufficient spacing for both a well and a septic requirement. Can you give the reasoning for that? And again, understanding it's not something that we're enforcing, but it's a guideline, you said.
Correct. Mr. Chair, I believe this policy was left alone based on its good planning practice to have, to be able to fit all of the requirements of development on a single lot. It's not something that is regulated.
Okay, it's not regulated. Policy 30.2, that was mentioned. That was in areas like the Wallo Pies, forested areas. Fire restrictions, basically. On its face, I just want to understand more of that. To me, it seems like it might be a good idea. I know that there's been a lot of people in forested areas. We've actually heard at CSA and a lot of the other forested areas in Arizona where you're having insurance companies just cancel policies on people. Does this policy have any sort of an implication or an effect on ability of residents to get insurance?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, no. Again, this document would be just for policy and regulation guidance. But we currently do not have anything in our ordinances that regulate the county from individuals establishing land divisions within high hazard, high fire hazard potential areas.
Okay. Supervisor Gould also mentioned policy 33.3. I've read that. I wouldn't have a problem with omitting that. I think that's what he was talking about, maybe omitting that. Policy 33.3. He also mentioned the current requirement, if you have a master plan development that's 1,800 acres in size or larger, that that would actually require a general plan amendment. Is that accurate? Right. It sounds right.
Mr. Chair, what it means is anything over 18,000 acres would require the major plan amendment, which, which state statute requires that it only can happen a certain period during the year, whereas the minor land division, minor plan amendments can happen at any time, which we see quite often. But yes, that's, that's the current policy.
Okay. And the question to the board is, well, that number is set by, not statute, by the, by the Board of Supervisors. Is that correct first?
Mr. Chair, I believe so, yes.
So the question to the board is, do we believe that that 1,800 acre is a good cutoff or do we want to reduce that size? Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, that would be the question.
And if we do want to reduce it, what would it be reduced to? I think that this is going to obviously go back to planning and zoning with some modified changes, if I had to guess. I think the last thing that anybody in this room wants is for this 22-month process to start all over again. That seems worse than going to the dentist with a mouthful of root canal, in my opinion. But I want to just say, thanks to all of the Golden Valley people, even though it's not my district, I appreciate your advocacy. I think, you know, as a supervisor, we have to try to be as balanced as possible and being conservative and believing in private property rights for everybody and all these things. It's, it's hard because what do you do when you have a bunch of different versions of people's American dreams start to bump up against each other, right? It's a difficult thing. But I think that already, just in 20, 22 months, you guys have had, and I don't know how this is going to turn out, but just what you've accomplished already, you know, you've, you've basically taken it from what it was over 4,000 something lots, all the way down to like 2,000 lots. So that in and of itself, I think is a victory that you guys can be proud of. On the water situation, I know there's been a lot of concern about the water, leading the water issues for the county board. I can tell you that if you haven't seen it already, the Arizona Department of Water Resources, they did put out a report. It's a preliminary estimate report, but it's a preliminary estimate of groundwater and storage for the Sacramento Valley Groundwater Basin Mojave County, Arizona, open file report number 10. And that report estimates down to a depth of 1,200 feet below land surface, which is pretty typical. And although it's, it's a preliminary estimate, and I say preliminary because those of you that follow the legislature and water, in 2023, the Arizona Legislature, they actually beefed up WIFA and then they also tasked the Arizona Department of Water Resources to provide what they call a supply and analysis, a supply and demand analysis for every single one of the groundwater basins in Arizona. And they have to start doing that on a recurring five-year basis. And so in the, in this estimate that they issued, they estimated preliminarily that there was 28.4 million acre feet down to 12,000 acre, or down to 12,000 foot in the Sacramento Basin. We'll get new data, obviously, as ADWR does that supply and demand report. We've spoken to them. I've spoken to the hydrologist. They're, they're going to be either coming out, I think in '26 or '27 with the analysis. I'm looking at you, Sam, because you were in the, on the call that we had with ADWR just to find out, you know, where those reports for our basins in Arizona, in Mojave County were really slated. I think they indicated '26 or '27 for like the Sacramento Basin, the Detrital Basin, up north above the Grand Canyon, where, where we have District 1, the Kanab Plateau Basin, that, that some of those basins are going to be coming out with those supply and analysis reports in '26 or '27. But in the meantime, the, the best preliminary estimate we have for the Sacramento Basin, and that's available. If you don't have it, you can contact the District 1 office. We'll make sure we get you a copy of that preliminary report called Sacramento Valley Groundwater Basin, oh, no, that's not what it's called, Water Resources Report Preliminary Estimate of Groundwater and Storage for the Sacramento Valley Groundwater Basin Mojave County, Arizona. Until that supply and, and demand analysis goes out, the 22 preliminary estimates, the best we have, I think. There's also been some concerns I've heard, and I understand what they are. You know, what's, what's the fire station or the public safety situation going to look like? What's the road situation going to look like? And sitting on this board for five years and then city council before and being, and being involved in, in the whole development process, it's, this type of stuff is, is the zoning and you don't get into that sites, site planning process until after the zoning stuff. And that's when you can, as a public agency, require a bunch of studies, a hydrology study, you can require a traffic impact study. And then based upon those types of studies, the public agency can require reasonable exactions, such as a new fire station or sewer system or whatever, whatever it is, right? But until you have those studies in the site planning process, you're not going to have that data. So the only other thing I want to talk about was policy 12.11, that three-mile radius. I agree, from District 1 standpoint, in the, in the areas that we directly oversee, three miles is probably too big of an area, much too big. But I still would like to see either a half-mile abutting municipal boundary or a mile abutting, abutting municipal boundary. I just think that's good planning. We shouldn't just automatically defer to what's easy and, and, you know, today, knowing that it's, it might solve today's problem, but it might create a problem 20 years down the road, as we've seen in Butler New Kingman, where, you know, we've had to go in and retrofit sewer systems and all these different things. That's, that's a cost that falls on all of our taxpayers to have to do it after the pact. Rather than, if you require it, the whole development pays for development, where you have a developer that has to come in and they have to put in all the infrastructure so that it doesn't fall onto the backs of our taxpayers to have to do it retroactively. That's something that I support. So if it does go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'd like to see, I'd like to see that remain intact, but maybe with a half a mile abutting a municipal boundary only, or a mile or something like that. Three miles is too big. Supervisor Martin, you have another comment?
Yeah, I, like I say, I know, you know, where this is kind of headed, it's going back. But one thing that, that I got to do today and I want to do today, I want to make a motion about this Dorado thing because I am inundated by calls, emails, whatever. This is probably the hottest thing in my district out there. And, and I promised them people that I'd represent them. And I'm going to. And I want, I want it on record. I want to make a motion that I want us to vote on. And if it passes, that's great. If it don't pass, that's, well, I can't control that.
Sure.
But I do want to make a motion because I want them to know where I stand on this. And like I say, it's, it's my biggest thing out there and also the 68 corridor. There's absolutely no opposition to that, that I've been able to find.
Sure.
And, and I want to, I want that on the record. I want to make a motion on this so these people and the people that are watching will know once and for all where I'm at on this.
Sure.
And so I, I need to do it. I want to do it. But I understand it's the board's pleasure how, how this happens. And I'll defer to Mr. Davis if I can do that. And, and if he says I can make a motion.
I'm going to stop you right there. Process matters. I'm going to say, it sounds like we're going to do a series of motions. Is that, is that appropriate and legal as far as process, referring a bunch of different motions back to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I think as a matter of procedure, logistics, understanding, I would.
I think it's easier and more adjustable for everybody if you break it up into separate motions on single subjects.
I agree.
Okay. So with that understood, we're going to take motions and by a single subject, okay? And we're going to refer them back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
If they pass.
If they pass.
Okay. My motion number one, I make a motion to refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission these changes. Revert the whole Dorado proposal in Golden Valley to suburban land designation from the current proposed land use designation.
Okay, that's one motion. Do I have a second?
One to five acre is suburban.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to refer that back to Planning and Zoning I'll refer, I'll second your motion, just for referral back to planning and zoning. We have a motion and second and additional discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion fails. Next, next motion.
Okay, next motion is to designate parcels abutting Highway 68 from Cam Vo Road to Egar Road as a commercial corridor. In other words, anything that butts up against 68 will be commercial. And it, from Cam Vo, if you don't know where that's at, I'd look it up, too. That's just when you, the road splits, it's right there. And then, of course, Egar's out there at the end of the valley. The purpose of this is, we keep commercial right there where you want to go to the store, you want to do this, it's right there. It's not going to be scattered from hell to breakfast out there. So that's the purpose of this motion.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. You have a third, third motion?
My last one, it may be tied up with everything, is I want to remove policy 12.11. I got to, I got to listen to the fire department guys. These were the chiefs of the fire department. And I understand there may be some dialogue that they don't understand how things are and yada, yada. But that's what came to me. I saw the letters. I saw the, the chief sitting in my office and he said, we absolutely oppose this. Well, that's why I'm making a motion that we remove Plan Policy 12.11 from the general plan.
I'll second that.
For that motion, second. Any additional discussion? Supervisor Burrelli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members. And that conversation came out because of a misunderstanding of what the intent of this was. And that's what started, in my opinion, a scare tactic or knee-jerk response by the other fire districts because the originator of that whole conversation came to me and explained, and he was, how he was confused on the process, that he thought that this was going to be a way to immediately, properties, the district would be encroached on by the cities on, with annexing. And he didn't understand the process for the annexing. So, yeah.
Is he an author of one of the letters I received, that you received?
He came, he's the originator that reached out to all the others who came to me and said.
The letters that this board received, we should have received two, two letters that I'm aware.
I'm just telling you that he was the originator to reach out to the other, to the others, and that's what.
Did he write one of those letters or not?
No.
Okay, then, then, okay. It's good enough for me. Anyway.
Supervisor Martin, I would have a discussion point. Rather than remove it entirely, would you be amenable to amending your motion to just a half a mile from a municipal boundary only? I don't think that that touches any fire district that wrote a letter.
I'm going to, I'm going to say this. I'm, I was contacted by those fire chiefs in person or by letter, and I'm going to represent what they said. Now, I understand what Supervisor Burrelli is saying. But he just sat there and said that whoever said he was wrong was not one of those three fire chiefs. that whoever said he was wrong was not one of those three fire chiefs. So I'm going to stay with my original motion is remove it. Sorry, but that's.
All right. Any additional discussion? Hearing, hearing none? We have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Other items for motions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to move the Gould package of changes as one. And if that fails, then we'll move them through as individuals.
Supervisor Burley, you have a comment?
Is 33.3 part of that?
Thirty-three? Thirty-three point, there's a 33.3, which is identify substandard housing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to discuss that.
You want to make a motion first or?
Yeah, that was the motion.
Supervisor Burley, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, discussion on this, and maybe Mr. Holter can explain this. But isn't the intent of this to prevent urban or, or blight? I'll quote it. Mojave County should identify substandard housing and promote the revitalization and rehabilitation of these structures. Isn't this to prevent blight?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Burley, I believe that would be the intent. I wasn't present when this policy was put into place. But we did not find issues with the policy and that's why we didn't choose to, to change it. I believe it is. We do have a, a dangerous structure or blight program within the county that we operate on identifying subject properties that are dangerous or essentially blight and removing those. And so this would be in line with that policy.
So just, Mr. Chair? And so to be clear, if this is removed from this, this general plan document, it doesn't erase the other policy?
Mr. Chair, or Mr. Chair, Supervisor Burley, no, it wouldn't have any effect on our current program that we're operating. Again, the, the general plans, policies are just a guidance for how we can create our regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Holter, what's our backlog on condemnation of and removal of dangerous structures?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gould, I believe we have about 50 to 60 cases that we're working on with dangerous structures.
So there's a, there's a current backlog. There's been no problem on identifying those as dangerous structures for removal?
We have quite a few.
Thank you. There's, there's a difference between dangerous structures and substandard. And it's arbitrary. The dangerous structure means we're afraid children are going to go playing and it's going to collapse and kill them. Substandard could mean worn out carpet, needs a paint job, needs a roof, things like that. I don't think that's things that we need to be involved with. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould, would you mind just briefly going through and just naming off the policies that are included in the Gould package?
Six point one was, that should be board approval. That missed the wrong word in, on page 45, paragraph three. It says date should be data on line four. Nine point two, we should add the phrase if the power is to stay in the county. Ten point one, I don't, should be removed. Ten point two, I don't know that, that should be removed because I don't know that we should be analyzing energy saving techniques. Ten point four, we should insert consider between should and incorporate. E1 was adopting an energy code that should be struck. Seven point five belief is our housing study. Or not seven point five, page 75. Yeah, this is just, this should, 75 should be, page should be removed.
Is 75 of the new plan?
Of the original plan. Hang on a second. It's on master plan, 75 and 76.
Of the original.
Yeah, I'm working off the original draft. They changed the page numbers, I believe.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gould, so that's in relation to the master plannings that we were talking about, just so I can.
Correct. Twenty-nine point four should be limited to flood planes. Twenty-nine point seven should be struck. Thirty point two should be struck. HM six should be struck. Page 90 should be removed.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gould on that one, what is that? Just to make sure we have clarification. Is that, what's that in reference? Is that the housing study?
Yeah.
Ninety, wasn't it 90 and 91 or something?
Ninety and 91. Thirty-three point three should be struck. And on page 111, add Bullhead Area Municipal Planning Organization. Where everywhere refers to Lake Havasu Area Municipal Planning Organization. And that's it.
I'll second the motion.
Additional discussion? Any additional discussion on any of those points? Supervisor Martin?
Mr. Davis? You heard what Supervisor Gould is making? Is it all well and fine? We're not going to run any legal down the road on this? We do it this way?
General, well, okay, are you asking a procedural question about doing motions this way?
Yeah, that, that it's going to be, it's good and proper.
The way I perceive this and members who have been members of the legislature will probably recognize this is I view these as like we have a final bill and we're making, it's when members propose amendments which are voted on individually and those go towards the final adoption. We haven't yet reached final adoption, but members are making amendments and that's what we're voting on as a motion.
Thank you.
This is a way for it to be very easy for our Planning and Zoning Commission to address each one of these. Mr. Chair. Excuse me, Director Holter, yes? I just was looking at my other list and Supervisor Gould, did you want to address the 18,000?
Oh, yeah.
Major plan amendment in this, in your motion, or do you want to do that as a separate motion?
Um, let's do that in a separate one.
I agree. We have a motion second already. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Any additional motions?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Move that we reduce the level for a major plan amendment from 1,800 acres to 640 acres.
I'll second that.
That would just be reducing it down to one section of land?
Correct. It limits the amount of time that people can apply for that also. Have to do it once a year.
Once a year, yeah. You've heard the motion and second and any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Are there any other motions? For consideration? I think, Mr. Davis, correct me if I'm wrong, but all those will now be forwarded back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to hear. And then they'll bring those changes back as a complete document to this board.
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, everybody, today for your input and for sitting through all of our voting and it goes back now to the Planning and Zoning Commission to hear all those things that the board just approved. And then it'll be coming back to this board for hopefully a final approval, four out of five at least. We'll move on to item number 34. Discussion and Possible Action. Receive a presentation from Procurement and Public Works regarding options for construction of the BOS 3 office in Lake Havasu City. Provide direction to staff to deliver a project at a target cost of $400,000 from the approved fiscal year 26 adopted budget. Good afternoon, Director Acton. Director Lotosky?
Good afternoon. I'm waiting for the presentation to load. Let's see. There we go. Okay, thank you. Good afternoon Supervisor, or Chairman and Supervisors. I will try to keep this brief. During the budget process, the board did earmark funds for a District 3 office. And the direction from the board was that before we move forward with any kind of project related to that, that we get board approval. And so staff has looked at various options. I'm going to go kind of quickly through the things that we've considered before we move forward. And then I will turn it over to Director Lotosky to talk about the identified scope of work if we were to move forward on a District 3 Supervisor's office. So initially, we are looking at a very basic office structure. Public Works has identified a site at the Lake Havasu Senior Center that would work for this. That's 450 Akoma Boulevard. We're looking approximately 1,000 square foot for the building. And if we move forward, we'll be targeting a cost of approximately $400,000. We've looked at a couple of options for the construction. It's been brought to our attention that there is high density foam construction that might result in some cost savings. It's essentially a concrete mixture over structural foam. It's reported to be a higher energy efficiency. And there are developers in our area that produce this. And then there's also the traditional, we'll say stick built wood framing and stucco construction that we could target. The benefits of traditional construction is that we know that there's more local contractor expertise that is already capable of providing that type of a service. And that we understand the, the maintenance and renovation that might come in the future for that. But we wanted to allow multiple options. And so then what we went and looked at is what are the options under Arizona Revise Statute for a public construction project? We can do the traditional design bid build, which is on the right of the screen, which is how we tend to do construction in Mojave County for smaller projects. Where we would hire an architect, complete full design, and then bid out the construction and we would award the construction to the low bid. Some generally, or not generally, the, the method for that requires that all technical specifications be provided prior for us going out to bid, which would not allow us to really look at alternative products. Or it would require anyone who bids on it to be able to provide those alternative products. So we would have to make a distinction in the design phase of how we wanted to move forward and then go out to bid for that particular thing. Construction then is competitively bid, award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. The design build method, which is usually for higher dollar construction, but in this case, we think that it might be the better option is where we go out to bid based on qualifications and a selection team and we select a team that is an architect and a contractor that delivers the full project. And this would allow for both traditional construction methods or alternative products, products to be proposed. Essentially, it would be incumbent on the design build team to put together the best proposal and the best price proposal and say, we can either do it with alternative materials or with traditional build. If we went that route, we would select based on those, on a technical proposal process so that we could get an entire full GMP at the award. In the past, when the county has done design build projects, we will often just award the pre-construction services to start with an expectation that the final design will come within budget. In this one, we would use that technical proposal so that what would come to the board would be design and build this at a price not to exceed whatever that offer might be. Again, with a target of about $400,000 for the total project costs. And so staff's recommendation is if we want to allow for alternative construction material methods to be used, that you authorize a design build project delivery, offering that competitive process, but also allowing for those alternative methods. And that we would have a target project cost of $400,000. At this point, I'll turn it over to Director Lotosky. It doesn't look like they loaded your backup here to, so if you have your memo that is the scope of work.
Good afternoon, Chairman Liamfeller, members of the board. I will keep this very brief. I think Director Acton, Acton really encompassed all of the key elements of what will be a cost effective approach to developing a District 3 office suite. Just to recap, the site, we have a site that's actually on a hard surface, about 2,400 square foot hard surface area just north and west of the existing Senior Center. What, what is very advantageous about this site is it has its own direct access to a portion of the parking that's already on site to the, to the south. So our emphasis in the scope of services is really to get across to the architect and contractor, especially in their design build method to target a 50-year service life for the building and pursue a cost effective building construction that may be included but not limited to wood, masonry, steel, and as Tara alluded to, the reinforced expanded polystream foam. The only two elements that we will stress upon the design build team to pursue is Lake Havasu City sign off on the parking requirements as well as the fire protection requirements. It's quite possible that a particular building method, construction method could involve a waiver or a lessening of fire protection requirements. That is going to be on the design build team and not staff, on the design build team to square away with Lake Havasu City under the permit process. But other than that, again, the scope of work will be really focused on delivering a cost effective build, this office suite.
Thank you. Any questions from our board? Supervisor Burley? Okay, thank you. Otherwise, they didn't take a motion. I do have one question. And maybe you covered it when I was, had stepped away, but is there, obviously, if you're going to go through a design build process, there's a, and you get into pre-construction services, there's a value engineering, value engineering component that's basically engineered into that where you can go system by system to identify any, or you, you would actually even, could even ask the contractor if they have ideas for cost savings, right?
Thank you, Chairman, and I think we did kind of cover this.
Cover that.
Traditionally, when the counties use the design build method, we've awarded pre-construction first. And we've said you have to commit to not exceeding our budget. And then we do a GMP amendment. What we would be proposing in this is that we actually use the technical proposal method for selecting the team. And that that technical proposal would be their commitment to a GMP that would include a requirement that they do all of it within the $400,000 total possible project cost. And so any value engineering would need to be done as part of what they offer us to make sure that they can achieve their GMP. In, in the past, like with the animal shelter, we got most of a design done through pre-construction and then requested the construction GMP. This, we would want the contractor. And we think that it, this project in particular works well for this because it. This, we would want the contractor. And we think that it, this project in particular works well for this because it is such a simple office building. That it really is just an office building. And so we would want whoever proposes through their technical proposal to give us the best possible solution at the start. And then that way, whatever contract we enter into, the board would know from the beginning that, that they are committing to that total price. How they value engineer it to heat, hit their GMP is with them working with public work staff.
Sure. Um, so they're going to be, they're going to be locking in at the front, at the front part, but is there going to be a clause also that, um, during the project, if they identify things that they may not have known? Or there might be some potential cost savings? I've seen some clauses that have gone into some design bill contracts during the contract term where if they identify something that there's an opportunity for some additional cost savings, that they could bring that to the owner? And there'd be some sort of a shared savings?
We can definitely explore what that would look like to get it in the initial contract.
Just maximize every dollar, right?
Yeah, that if there are value engineering and there's a reduction in the total project cost beyond what they originally promised, that there would be some kind of sharing of those savings, sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, I didn't entertain a motion.
Yes, well, I'd
Supervisor Burley?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make this statement. If this project bid came in at a $400,000, just tell them to go back and sharpen their pencils. Because I've already done some research on this strata guys and also some general contractors in our area. And I know per square footage, uh, what materials are and labor. So I've done some research, so it's not going to even come in nowhere near that number. But just to be aware, put that in the air. They better have some sharp pencils because, uh, that's not the cost-effective way of doing this. Uh, this strata people, hopefully, uh, we have a general contractor that's certified with this company. If this can come in and we can utilize this material, be the first one in Mojave County, I guess it's a municipal building, because I do know they're doing some residential. But, uh, this is, so ha- highly energy efficient, 20% degrees difference from inside outside. It's extremely fire resistant. So hopefully, we can get these, a general contractor that's can bid on this project with us. And we're talking about maybe about 150 a square foot rather than the 200 or 250 traditional. Uh, with that said, um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the design and build method with a contractor.
All right, you've heard that motion.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Uh, Scotty McClure, you have three minutes if you'd like to speak on this issue.
Scotty from Bullhead. Ain't no way you're going to come in with $400,000 unless he accepts a metal container off a ship. Wouldn't you like that? Or how about just a trailer modular, you know, all brand new? Just no way, uh, can we do away with the architect? I don't know, this stuff she put up there, it just, that just, I don't know the word for it. It just, all the conditions that you put on this contractor. I mean, whatever. It's in the budget, you've already approved it once.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Uh, item number 35, discussion and possible action, approve and authorize the chairman to sign the intergovernmental agreement between Mojave County and the Arizona Department of Health Services. Approving the transfer of general fund contingency funds to support the woman, the women, uh, infants and children. Food supplement packages for a period of up to 30 days. This transfer will provide continued food supplement support during the ongoing federal government shutdown. And may or may not be reimbursed by the federal government once the shutdown concludes. Two funding options are proposed. Option one, transfer up to $174,500 to continue food supplement support only for children under 12 months of age. Option two, transfer up to $481,300 to continue food supplement support only for all eligible children. Director Palmer, yours.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board. This is for consideration of, um, utilizing the contingency funds to food, to fund food packages for, um, the categories that were stated. Um, working with Arizona Department of Health Services, when the government shutdown occurred, we learned of the possibility to provide funding for up to 30 days for food packages for WIC recipients. And so I, uh, want to keep it short and sweet. If you all have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions for staff? Director, Supervisor Martin?
Thank you. What, it says, the, the second one says all eligible children. What age group does that go to?
Under the age of five.
Under five?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Uh, Supervisor Latman, thank you.
Can you give us the one-minute summary, the difference between SNAP and WIC?
Absolutely. Chairman Supervisor Latman, SNAP provides food assistance for just about any food item, whatever's non-taxable at a grocery store. For women, infant, children, also known as WIC, that is specific food packages of nutrient-dense or, um, fortified foods that have been proven to have the nutrients in it to increase health outcomes for both and, well, for all women, infant, and children.
Uh, we have two people that have signed up to speak on this item. Let's get to those. Uh, Mr. McClure, Scotty McClure. Uh, Jennifer Esposito, you're on deck.
Scotty from Bullhead. I'd like one of you supervisors to ask Mr. Davis if this is even legal. This is federal, and I don't think you guys should be involved in this at all. Uh, you know, I watch TV at night and we see all these kids on TV, give me 1995 and all this stuff. Which, you know, I've been to the Shriners Hospital when I was a kid, when my dad was a Shriner. And, you know, I'm not heartless here, but I don't think this is your job to do, give them a penny. Where are all the churches at in this county? We can go that route, and that would be legal for the churches to supply maybe some donations or whatever. There's 100 churches in this Bullhead alone. Where are they at today? I don't see any of them out here saying, we'll, we'll give you 10 grand. This is a federal problem. Uh, I want to get rid of, I want to blame John McCain for his thumbs down on Obamacare and this. We need to get rid of the fraud in food stamps to start with. Just make them all start over again and re-up. California, how many illegal aliens do they have? That are getting food stamps and driver's licenses? This is not your problem here, and this is my taxpayer money. Oh, I got stuff on this other side, too. Still got a minute and a half. This is Paul Gosar's problem. And he's already voted, and the House of Reps is done with this. They have approved to open up the government again. So guess what? We've got the two greatest senators down there that are doing the thumbs down. I'm being facetious, Travis.
No.
You know me enough, yeah. We got the two greatest senators down there. One wants to be president, he's already been to Ohio how many times? Isn't that the people that vote first? Yeah. Something like that. I mean, this is just ridiculous that we're, like I say, I listened to Gosar last Friday, Thursday, whatever, a couple of days ago on the radio. And, uh, it's up to the Senate to do this, not us.
Jennifer Esposito.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito Kingman. I have to kind of agree with Scotty that this is a federal thing. My concern is that this money may not be compensated back. Now, you know, I'm pretty plugged into social media, X and Facebook and different things. And, um, there's been a lot of fraud exposed in the SNAP system, and I understand the difference between WIC and SNAP, of course. Um, so, you know, I'm not, I know what is served up at the local food banks, and I donate a half a page in every issue of my newspaper to listing those food banks. And, you know, we don't have a food shortage in this country. We have a food distribution problem. You know, I've seen people asking for money on the side of the road, and I've said, hey, take a copy of my newspaper. Here's the list of all the local food banks. They're like, yeah, no, no thanks. Don't want to, don't want to go there. They, you know, but one of the things that they do tend to have a shortage of at the food banks is formula. They don't always have formula available. You know, every food bank is different. What they get is what they get. It can vary from week to week or month to month. So, you know, i- if you guys decide to err on the side of compassion with our taxpayer money, then I would prefer the lower-cost option that essentially, you know, children 12 months or under would at least be able to have baby formula. Of course, I'm in the camp that I prefer they were all breastfed anyways. Um, because it's healthier. Formula contains all kinds of horrible stuff that I would never feed a child. Um, but that's my personal preference. Um, but we don't know if we're going to get this money back. And we also don't know how long this is going to go on. There's a judge that exceeded, apparently, way exceeded his authority in ordering President Trump to, you know, come up with funds. And the administration said, okay, you tell us how to do that. And apparently, the judge said, yeah, I don't have the answer. Just make it happen. I mean, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't even know if, if this will go 30 days. We don't know if this will go six months. Um, so I just want to say that, you know, I don't envy you making this decision. It's very difficult. It's very politically incorrect. And this is one of those times where I'm glad it's not me voting on this. Um, but, but it is money that we might not get back. And, you know, I hear us cry at budget time all the time. We don't have enough. We need it. We need a sales tax. We need more money, more money, more money. Well, is it, you know, you have to decide whether this is money you're going to spend that you might not get reimbursed on, that might deplete the general fund for a, another emergency or something? You know, can the churches step up? They are. I'm seeing people posting all over social media. Everybody's networking. Everybody's panicked, but everybody's networking. You know, neighbors are stepping up. They're putting together packages for their neighbors. I don't know. Good luck.
That's the last speaker that we had?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Attorney Davis, did we look to see whether this is legal since the state took away welfare from the counties in 1972?
Supervisor Gould, members of the board, uh, our office has been working with the, uh, public health the entire step of the way. Um, and so the way that this would be legal is that this is the state funds that they're giving to the counties. And if the federal government chooses to reimburse the states, then the state reimburses the county. If that answered your question.
No, whether, my question is whether the county can spend property tax dollars on a welfare program?
That one I haven't heard, so I'll look at that and get back to you.
We should also run on the assumption that we will not be paid back. As a former member of the legislature, I've heard a lot of promises over the years about if you spend money on this stuff, the Federals are going to pay us back. Um, the Obama administration told us if we went to, uh, one year of unemployment, that we, our employers would get that, we would be paid back. And that was untrue. And then they had to go through and raise the rate for unemployment for every employer in the state because the Federals did not make that true. So prob- promises from other branches of government, I don't think are worth the, uh, paper that they're written on, even if they're, even if they are even written. So if you're going on the assumption we're going to get paid back, I don't think that the governor believes she's going to be paid back. In fact, I saw a letter from the Department of Agriculture that said that if she puts money into SNAP, she will not be paid back. I just, I don't think this is the county's, um, obligation. Um, if we leave people alone, they'll come up with solutions for themselves. Um, I'm a Christian man. Jesus told me to feed poor people. But he didn't tell me to form a central government and tax people against their will to feed those people. He told me to do it. So if you can't feed your baby and you're in my district, come by my office and I'll take care of you. Thank you.
Supervisor Burley?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, well, this is not SNAP. This is for WIC. Uh, my question is, has, would it has the state responded that they'll, because I know this is a pass-through from the federal government. Comes through the state, the state passes it on to us. Uh, are we going to get reimbursed? Has anybody reached out to DHS?
Director Palmer?
Chairman Supervisor Borelli, um, they continue to let us know that it may or may not be reimbursed. There is, um, an item that the federal government states that they do not guarantee reimbursement of expenses at the state level during a federal government shutdown.
Okay, another question, Warren.
Supervisor Burley?
Would you consider WIC, infant and children, would you consider that early childhood development?
Um, Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Borelli, um, health outcomes for children, infants who are on the WIC program tend to, to be better. And they have, um, better opportunities to learn later on in life when they reach school age. And so that's a positive impact of it.
Okay. Just to give you a follow-up, do you have a relationship with First Things First?
We do. My other hat that I wear, I'm actually on the board of First Things First. Um, we do referrals back and forth. We've been in communication with First Things First during the entire government shutdown, um, along with Head Start.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Burley?
Yes, good, because, you know, when I was in the legislature and I did some research, was matter-of-fact with, because of Andy Biggs doing some research and, and digging into it. They're sitting on over a $350 million rollover every year in their budget. I know they have the resources. Are, are they willing to step up and help shore up WIC?
At this time, First Things First is trying to help with the childcare crisis. And so their funding is going to help with childcare expenses for working parents.
But early childhood development, zero to five years old, I understand that, but these are, these are five years old, under. I mean, there's other resources out there. And which really is appalling because once we get into these tribal entities of other agencies and NGOs, they don't want anybody to gore their ox. Hopefully, they can see some charity. Basically, because they're benefiting from the smokers that are out there. Just my opinion there. If you could reach out to them and see what else you can, you can do. But, you know, but thank you, ma'am. That's, that's all I have.
Chairman? Uh, I'm going to go to Supervisor Martin, then I'll come to you. Thank you. Supervisor Martin, do you have a comment?
Yes. Listen, these, these kids are the most vulnerable in society. And I don't have a dog in this fight, but I do. Because there's people in my district that this is absolutely, it's going to affect. And, but I, I think about it, and I think about the babies and the, and the kids up to age five. You know, I, I get that this political grandstanding and pointing fingers and everything. But the bottom line is, I'm not willing to let those kids suffer. And from my standpoint, you know, we have a contingency fund for emergencies. And if we don't take care of our little ones, then I don't know what would be more appropriate. So I will support going with the second option.
Supervisor Latman, thank you.
Supervisor Martin, you and I are somewhat aligned. I would support going with the first option. We can't be the only county thinking about doing this. Or anybody else that you're aware of?
Um, Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Latman, Coconino County already approved, um, funding for up to 30 days from their, um, county funds, county contingency. Hila, Maricopa, and there's two other counties that I can't think of off the top of my head.
Have any counties defeated such a proposal or, or not enacted that you're aware of?
Um, not the, I, I'm not aware of anybody who has not entertained it that has been, um, been against it.
Director Palmer, I have a question, uh, regarding these, the WIC program. What's the eligibility requirements? And, and it's meant to be a temporary thing. Is that correct, or or is it something that you get on for years and years and years?
Chairman Lingefelter, the, uh, requirements, you have to be Chairman Langenfelter, the requirements, you have to be a county resident, so you have to provide proof of county residency, 185% above the federal poverty level. There's certificate, recertification that happens annually or every six months? Annually. So they're recertified every year to ensure that they still meet the criteria to be on the WIC program.
Is it meant to be a temporary thing? Or is it meant to be a permit, like a long-term supplement?
If, we've had families that they've been unemployed for a period of time, so they're on for six months and then they're done. We've had other families who oftentimes a pregnant woman join, is enrolled in WIC. So that's a nine-month period. And then if the circumstances remain that they still meet the criteria to be enrolled in WIC, then the mother and the child would then be enrolled in WIC. But every year, those documents are reviewed.
Appreciate that. You know, I have to say, and I think it echoes all of our other supervisors, that I hate being in this position and having to vote for this. And, you know, you could do a bunch of finger pointing, but I think that it's on Senator Kelly and Senator Gallego to be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem. Vote to pass a clean continuing resolution and then open the government up, because it doesn't just affect these kids. It affects our troops. It affects federal workers. It affects our air traffic controllers. And it's just going to get worse and worse and worse. So for them to put these kids or our troops or anybody else, you know, treat them as a bargaining chip. So, you know, that's not the way you do it, you know? Pass the clean resolution and then continue to negotiate on your little democratic things that you want, right? But I resent having to do this. Having said that, you know, I thought long and hard about this since I saw that it was on the agenda and I really weighed it. And I can only vote for myself and for District One, but I am going to support Option Two. So any additional comments or entertain a motion?
Supervisor Gould.
I'm looking at the income requirements here for WIC. Family of three is $49,300. Family of four is $59,400. Family of five, $69,600. So it's not 185% of the poverty level. For a single person, it, for a single person, it would be, but it says, there it says that it's, that it is, depending on the size of the family. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Supervisor Letman.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we transfer up to $174,500 to continue food supplement support only for children under the age of 12 months.
You've heard that motion. Do I have a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Do I have an alternative motion? Supervisor Martin.
I'd like to make a motion that we fund the program for children under five years.
That Option Two?
Option Two.
You've heard that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let me explain my vote, sir.
All opposed?
No.
I appear to have it and do have it, so order it. Go ahead and explain your vote.
Yes, and, and this has already passed, but I want to go on the record. I am, I too am a Christian, and I don't believe that government should be doing these things. But when government created this program, and hey, how do you like your socialism? Because this is what happens when you start relying on the federal government. People relying on this because of deadbeat dads that are out there, or some people just can't get their, can't get it together for whatever reason, but there's the issue. And that's why I think Christians, we should be helping each other. It's a human being thing. And I think it's a sin when we have the opportunity to help somebody, especially feeding children. I don't see that as an immoral thing. I think it's a very moral thing, especially when it's the children that are suffering from the sins of the father and the sins of adults. I know there's veterans or Kuti out there that have been overseas, and we've seen the victims of adults, that for whatever selfish reasons they have in their heart, the first people to suffer are the children. And I know this goes against some of our conservative principles about the government doing these things, but you know what? The government failed them. And I think it's up to, I'm, I'm glad we are able to do something. If it's his tax dollars, I'll, I'll take the heat for my constituents on, on this, but I can't, I can't turn the, I can't turn away. Anyway, sorry.
Any other comments before we move on?
Paul Kelly and Gallego.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good suggestion. Item number 36. Supervisors, I put this on the board. It's, it's a typical thing, basically just entertaining the possibility of canceling the December 15th, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. It's up to the board.
Motion to approve.
For that motion. And second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so order it. Thank you. Item number 37, we heard an executive session. We do have one speaker. We'll let her speak and then we'll move on. Jennifer Esposito, you signed up to speak on item number 37.
Jennifer Esposito Kingman, once again. The reason that I signed up to speak on this is because every time this issue comes up, you guys talk about it before the meeting and executive session. You come out, you make a motion that's basically, let's do whatever we talked about in executive session, and the people have absolutely no idea what you're doing on our behalf. And, you know, I think that transparency owes the public a better explanation of how the board is choosing to proceed in this very murky and delicate situation. You know, we've, we have aired some information about why we may or may not be taking legal action, you know, with the airport in Bullhead City. But I think the people deserve to know what it is that a majority of you, or all of you, or whatever, think we should do about it. Because, you know, legal action does have ramifications. I mean, if we do get in, if we're getting into litigation, I think the people should know. If we're taking no action, I think the people should know. But I think that, that the can, what seems to be a continuing thing of, this is something we discussed in executive session, I just moved to do that thing, is sort of not very transparent for the constituents that everybody is working for. And I just signed up to speak to say that I hope you would actually, maybe just for once, tell us what's on your mind and tell us what you're trying to do, because I think we deserve to know. Thank you.
We do have one person that just signed up to speak on this item. Ben, I can't, is it Gorex or Gary?
So Ben Gary, I am a CEO and founder of Capstone Arrow. I've been kind of making the rounds, speaking with multiple airports in the county. I'll echo Ms. Esposito's comments there. It was difficult to understand exactly the best way to engage the board on this.
Speaking of the microphone, I'm sorry, sir.
Sorry, tall guy problems, very. Just at a high level, I want to respect the bounds of executive session, want to expect some of the conversation, respect some of the conversations we've been having with the airports in the region. And I forget which supervisor it was, but somebody had said the state shouldn't be pushing its red down to the counties. And I couldn't echo that sentiment more. Appreciate that one. Chairman, I think one of the things I wanted to highlight is that if it pleases the board or, you know, Commissioner Let, Supervisor Letman or Mr. Davis, I would just like some advice on who best to speak with about the actual potential path forward with the airport. This is Bullhead City specifically. Just want to clarify that I feel like the county has gotten the impression that the stance is no, and that may not be applicable. There is a path forward, and I feel like a lot of conversation has been going, I don't know, behind closed doors in executive sessions. But there is a third lane that is in alignment with everybody's interests. And I just do want to seek some advice from the board on who would best be the person to engage with on that conversation. There is a third lane here that I think is very promising for the county and its constituents. And depending on how the county proceeds, I want to just have that conversation before everybody entrenches into their legal positions, that there is probably a blind spot here that I think everybody isn't really considering that is potentially up to $2 to $3 billion worth of economic value for the county itself. So just wanted to make myself available, present my contact information. Ms. Gould has that, but I'll be in town for the next few days and welcome any opportunity to collaborate with the board on this.
Thank you, sir. That's the last person we have signed up. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Move that the County Manager and the County Attorney Act on instruction given in executive session.
Heard that motion, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do have it, so order it. Thank you. Item number 38, Supervisor Gould, approve in the adoption of BOs Resolution Number 2025 dash 191 regarding the Medical Examiner Office Director of Operations, John Hassett, lying to the board during the October 20th, 2025 meeting. I'll turn it over to Supervisor Gould to introduce this item. We also have a few members that have signed up to speak.
Sure. After our testimony on the medical examiner contract, during, I took a look at some issues. Supervisor Borelli asked a question, Mr. Hassett. Mr. Hassett responded. Supervisor Borelli asked a question. Again, the exact wording of those are in the backup, but I believe that Mr. Hassett lied to Supervisor Borelli and thus to the board. You can't let people lie to you without doing something about it. So that's why I brought this item forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Gould. We'll get into speakers. First that have signed up to speak on item number 38 is Tarusha Ann. Andrew Kutch, you're on deck. If you would state your name and address for the record and the clerk. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, my name is Teshura Annie Elias. I'm Senior Attorney of Lundberg &amp; Elias in Bullhead City. I also represent Mr. Hassett and Serenity Memorial Group. I'm here to address this issue about the allegations of lying to all of you at the last hearing. I'm here to say that my client, in fact, did not lie to all of you at the last hearing. His responses to the questions posed by Supervisor Borelli are consistent with the information gathered by the Mojave County Sheriff's Office last year in its investigation of my client. The Mojave County Sheriff's Office actually specifically investigated the issues of the ownership of the cemeteries and funeral homes and documented those findings in Incident Report 24-005433 at pages five and six. As part of that investigation, the Mojave County Sheriff's Office interviewed FPG. FPG acquired my client's businesses, specifically the funeral homes and the cemeteries, back in October of 2022. In that report on page six, it is confirmed that my client has absolutely no ownership interest in FPG. He has absolutely and receives no financial compensation. He's not involved in the daily operations of FPG since acquiring his businesses. It also clearly states that as part of the investigation, the issue of why my client is listed on the LLC. FPG confirmed that they are in the business of selling cemetery plots, according to Arizona Revise Statute 322125. In order for that entity to actually sell cemetery plots, they need a broker, a licensed broker, and that licensed broker needs to be listed as a manager, a member, or an officer. And I'm sure, as Mr. Davis will confirm with you, if you're listed as a manager, member, or officer on an entity, and the information pulled up from the ACC website, that doesn't necessarily mean you have an ownership interest. And the statute also doesn't state that you have to have an ownership interest in order to be listed on the entity. I'm not really sure why this item was placed on the agenda. I can only assume it was to publicly disgrace my client or slander his name. Separate and aside from that, I'll go one step further. Even though my client is listed as a broker for FPG, he receives absolutely no compensation for doing so. He also receives no sales commissions in relation to any sales of cemetery plots. At the end of the day, look, my client is in a contract with you, the county, and we have to work together to facilitate that contract. Bringing an item like this on the agenda to falsely accuse him of lying, publicly humiliate him, does not facilitate that relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Andrew Kutch. Scotty McClure, you're on deck.
Andrew Kutch, 10507 Fremont Road, Mojave Valley. Good afternoon, Chair and Board members. If his name is on the LLC, that would make a direct correlation, am I correct, into the business of, of the cemetery? If he's the owner of an LLC, limited liability corporation.
My question for the attorney.
For the attorney, Will Davis? Would that be a good assumption?
Is it a question from the board or the public?
I'll ask him the question.
Supervisor Gould, go ahead.
It greatly depends with, you'd have to look into the corporate, just generally because the county attorney's office is going to not really dive into this particular issue, but it, you could get, it really depends on what the internal workings of any corporation are. So I, I really don't want to answer affirmatively or negatively on any specifics with this one. I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay. Going on, moving forward. Arizona law does not tolerate contractors lying to the, to this board to win favorable contracts. And statutes are very clear. Under ARS 13, subsection 132310, knowingly making false statements to obtain government contract is a class two felony. Up to 12 and a half years in prison, $150,000 in fines. Applies whether the lie is about qualifications, costs, performance, histories, doesn't really matter too much. If the, if the false claim is sworn, like a bid affidavit, ARS 13, subsection 132702 makes it perjury. Class four felony. For procurement, ARS subsection 412611 allows the county to debar any contractor who misrepresents material facts, banning them for future bids for one to five years. And if the contract was secured by fraud, the county can void it entirely and recover damages under civil and fraud, civil fraud laws. These are not gray areas. They're criminal administrative and civil tools to protect the taxpayers' dollars and public trust. When a contractor, any contractor, including those performing critical services like autopsies across multiple counties, yada, yada, misleads the board, we have a duty to act. To, I urge the board to refer to credible allegations to the county attorney, Mr. Will Davis, for investigation and disbarment authority under the procurement code, demand transparency, and all future contract awards. Arizona law gives us the power to hold liars accountable. Let's use it. Thank you very much.
Scotty McClure. Sharon Howgen, you're on deck.
Scotty from Bullhead. And of course, I left my back up at home, so I'm doing a good fly. From what I'm seeing, that sure looks like, and these are licenses issued by the state in Phoenix that show 19, or 2025, 26, that he is on this FPG license. Now, I don't know what the hell I'm talking about when it comes to running the, the system here that you guys have kicked the can down the road all these years. And I don't like liars lying to me. I mean, good grief, we got a guy running for the Arizona Legislature that has fraud convictions in several states. I don't know exactly how many states he was, or how much money he owes back, but he's able to run for the legislature. This here, the same thing. I don't like liars. I want to hear from Mr. Hassett. And I want him to talk again on the record on that camera right there. I want to hear from him, because I don't know what the hell I'm talking about. Mr. Davis won't help us out on this.
Sharon Howgen. Jennifer Esposito, you're on deck. I'm sorry? Okay, sure. Give her five minutes. Thank you. Thank you. You state your name and address to the record. Thank you very much.
My name is Sharon Hofstra-Haugen, and I live in Bullhead City. This is a very, very touchy situation, but I'd like to read you something that I think is important to put on the record. Few things in our democracy are as important as ensuring that citizens have confidence in their institutions in a crisis. For many individuals, the death of a loved one is just that crisis, and ensuring that the proper steps and procedures are taken at the death scene of that loved one reassures the family members that the cause of death was determined properly and is a key element in maintaining citizen confidence in local officials. How local death investigators do their job is critical to family members who are mourning a loss today and who may be seeking resolve and/or justice tomorrow. Unresolved answers and denied proper investigation breeds contempt for the institutions created to ensure that proper care and treatment of the loved one and that justice is done. I'm sad to say this is not being done. I have now released my daughter's video of the death scene that was given to me unrequested by Lieutenant Williams after I appeared before the city council. I have had it reviewed already, but I have released it to various law enforcement entities outside of the county and to other medical examiner's offices. I have received one back, and it made me cry the rest of the day that after I heard what it said. The treatment of my daughter in that video by Mr. Hassett's Veronica Dennis showed disgusting, horrifying, and cruel treatment of the body. That's were their words. It showed Veronica Dennis calling, "Let's get this chick's body overturned," and so many other things that were just so, I don't want to repeat them here. We need to have a certified and qualified pathologist and real, real, a good company running this. Mr. Hassett got up in front of the city council when I was there, and he lied, saying they did everything right, everything was perfect, and it wasn't. And I urge you to strongly rescind this contract because how in the world did Mr. Hassett come in the day after Monolith made a bid, and he comes in the next morning with the exact bid down to the penny? Some miraculous thing came to him? Something got leaked, and this contract was awarded under lies and deception and mysterious things going on here. You are the board here. Our deceased deserved to be better treated. I have been up here before, and ever since the new three supervisors came in, we're reverting back to all the insanity again at the prior board on August nineteenth, when they, of two thousand twenty-four, when they decided not to renew the contract. We need reputable people running it. You had the chance with Monolith to stop the insanity. Even you, Mr. Martin, when you had the sheriff, he said there were issues, but maybe none currently. But what you didn't further was that those issues, you didn't ask them what they were, and they were found to have validity of unethical practices. The only thing it was, they didn't reach the bar of criminal. This has all been validated, and why would you three continue to want Mr. Hassett to run this when you had the opportunity to stop all of this? I, if it was any of your daughter that was found like this, and then you learn what went on there, I won't view the video. I can't. I cried the other day when I found out what was going on in that video. It made me sick to my stomach. You need to rescind this contract and give it to Monolith because it wasn't gotten on truth. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's the last speaker that we have on item number thirty-eight.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
If you take a look at the backup, Mr. Hassett is on the Department of Real Estate form. Mr. Hasslett is, is named as, as the broker for FPG. On the court, the documents from the Corporation Commission, he's listed as a member of the LLC for FPG. FPG is a foreign corporation out of Delaware. So if you, if you look at that, if you do a little study, you know, I'm apparently an internet attorney, but if you look on the internet, it says a member has an ownership position.
Attorney Davis. I believe the first speaker, Mr. Hassett's legal counsel, referenced Sheriff's Office report. Have you reviewed that, and do you know what the date of that report was?
I have not reviewed that report. That report came out before I came back to the county. I am generally aware of it, but I have not reviewed the report.
I guess I would like to hear from either Mr. Hassett's legal counsel or Mr. Hassett himself, if he wants to come down and, or they want to come down and explain these documents Thank you.
Is there a specific question that you'd like me to answer?
Yes. Item number thirty-eight, I assume that you've reviewed all of the backup documents that were included with item number thirty-eight on this agenda.
I have.
My specific question is, so you have the proposed resolution, and then you have an LLC statement of change, you have a State of Arizona Department of Real Estate license, So are these the licenses that that Sheriff's Office report that you referenced in your earlier testimony reviewed, or are these, are these new? And if these are new, maybe you or your-
They're not new. They were part of that investigation.
They're part of it.
Yes. And as I stated before, FPG is in the business of selling cemetery plots. The law requires, and so does the Arizona Department of Real Estate requires, that if you are going to be conducting business in the sale of real estate, you need a broker, a licensed broker, to be named as a member, manager, or officer. As I stated, just because you're listed as a member, manager, or officer on the Arizona Corporation Commission's website does not mean and is not dispositive of an ownership interest. Those things will be outlined through bylaws and operating agreements. However, my client has absolutely no ownership interest in FPG. He does not conduct himself in their daily operations. All he did was hang up his broker's license with them. Again, he receives no compensation for doing so, and he receives no commissions from any sales of cemetery plots.
I guess my only other question, just to get it out on the record. Lost my place. Excuse me. Thank you for your patience. Oh, yes, Supervisor Borelli, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you have to have a real estate license to own a funeral, funeral home?
You don't have to have a real estate license to own a funeral home. You have to have a real estate license to sell cemetery plots.
And you had said that Mr. Hassett is doing this without compensation, basically pro bono?
Correct. And I will note that under the Arizona Corporation Commission website, there were changes made recently with regards to the membership formation. Actually, FPG had a different real estate broker that was acting on its behalf. That real estate broker left. They approached Mr. Hassett, and Mr. Hassett said he would do it pro bono mainly because of a situation that had come up where he was, got a personal story, and quite frankly, there are hardly any real estate agents that are licensed to do sales in cemetery plots, and Mr. Hassett is one of the few of them. So in order for FPG to continue, and in the interim until they find a new broker, that is why he, he's allowing them to use their broker license.
Supervisor Borelli, thank you.
If Mr. Hassett didn't use his broker license for this cemetery, what would happen in the cemetery?
They wouldn't be able to sell any plots for burials.
She's just doing, they would have to close the gates.
Mm-hmm. Yes, they would. And there are some people who choose not to be cremated, still.
Yeah, me too, yeah. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I get to my last, refresh my last point. In the proposed resolution, the second whereas, it says, whereas John Hassett's name is the Director of Operations of the Medical Examiner's Office and as the President of Serenity Memorial Group Incorporated. Can you explain the latter part of that sentence where he is listed as the President of Serenity Memorial?
As part of the asset purchase agreement with FPG, my client was allowed to retain the name Serenity Memorial Group because at the time of that purchase and sale, he already had a contract with Mojave County, and it's documented on page six of the Mojave County Sheriff's report that that was the reason why he retained Serenity Memorial Group, and FPG agreed to that. Just the name.
So, I'm sorry for being a little dense. He's the President of Serenity Memorial Group, but they're, how are they conducting business right now?
Serenity Memorial Group is the group that has the contract.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay. Okay. So, so you guys pivoted from, from mortuary services to doing medical examiner services, is that right? Under that, under that business name? I, I'm sorry.
No.
According to the Mojave County Sheriff's Office investigative report, and as confirmed by FPG, the assets of Serenity Memorial Group were sold, but the name was retained by my client.
Okay. I think that answers my question. Thank you. Put it up to the board, Chairman. Supervisor Gould.
So does FPG owe Mr. Hassett money for the sale of the business?
No.
And I'm also curious why Mr. Hassett didn't acknowledge the fact that he was on their LLC when Supervisor Borelli asked him if he had any financial interests in funeral homes?
Because he doesn't have a financial interest in funeral homes.
So he just does this out of the goodness of his heart?
Yes.
Interesting. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Letman, thank you.
Attorney Elias, I just pulled up on Merriam-Webster what an owner is. A person who owns something, one who has the legal or rightful title to something, one to whom property belongs. Does he own any property with FPG?
No, he doesn't.
Thank you.
Open it up to the board. Supervisor Gould. Appreciate putting this on your concerns in front of the full board. I need to do more as District One Supervisor and get a copy of that, Sheriff's support again, and read that.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor.
Apparently, the IRS definition of member says he has an ownership position also.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Call to the public. Treasurer Mello. Thank you for being with us here this morning, this afternoon, excuse me.
Chairman, board, I just wanted to make you aware and the public aware that I'm having another online auction. It's excess county-owned property. We have one with a structure, and that's nine fifty Buchanan Street here in Kingman. That's the former animal shelter. We're gonna begin that auction on November seventeenth, and that will conclude on December fifth. That information will be on the treasurer's website. We're going to have thirty-two vacant properties available, and that will be, begin on December first and also end on December fifth. Again, all that information will be on my website. IT is gonna put it up there by the end of the week, and I expect to have complete success with this one as well, and I look forward to coming back in January and reporting the good news.
Thank you very much.
All right. Have a good day.
Jennifer Esposito. Scotty McClery, you're on deck.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito, again. Couple of things. One of them is, before three of you were on this board, the previous incarnation of the board had stated that they were going to give the people in Golden Valley Improvement District the rights to have a private board again. As a parting shot, on his way out the door, Buster Johnson said that he wanted to, he moved to table that motion indefinitely due to pending litigation. However, there is no pending litigation, and I think that it's time that someone puts it back on the agenda to give the people of Golden Valley their own GVID independent board. People filled out applications, people were accepted to do it, but it was just, you know, pushed off. So since that problem has been resolved, I think that, based on comments today, you know, the people would like control of their water. I don't think people understand that the county doesn't provide that service to us for free. They bill us something like four hundred thousand dollars to provide the service, and that we pay way more than our fair share of the pension and benefits and things for the employees in the water department. I think that needs to stop. We've added, another, you know, water board has been taken over by the county and things. I don't think anything has been shifted as to what our burden of payment is. I don't know, but I think that we should control our own water, hundred percent. The other thing I'd like to point out to you is, since you did pass a motion to instruct staff to create a business corridor along Highway sixty-eight in Golden Valley, I'd like to point out you missed something, Don. In the Dorado proposal, there's a chunk of commercial development in that little bitty square in between the two other squares. So somebody needs at some point, maybe the next meeting, I don't know, to make a motion to take that out, at least, since we've all decided, haven't we, that the commercial is supposed to be only on the highway? Why would we want commercial way up there? And if you don't know where way up there is, you might want to get in your car and drive way up there and see. I know where it is. I've been there, you know? But it's not, it's not an appropriate place for commercial, you know, development. So I don't know what you guys are gonna do about that, how you're gonna deal with this resolution, how you're going to, you know, I think, I think the legal questions I raised should be asked by one of you. Because if you're gonna carry over anything from that, from that original two thousand and six thing, then, then do those things apply to the future development? Do they have to get environmental impact studies or any of this other stuff? What is that water plan? I don't know. I'm not getting paid to know. You are.
Scotty from Bullhead. Now, on number thirty-six, you canceled the December fifteenth meeting, but earlier in the program, you guys, I thought you guys authorized the December nineteenth meeting. What goes on there? That makes no sense. Go Christmas shopping or go vacation or whatever, but why did you make a nineteenth appointment? I mean, you have to meet here. I don't get it. You cancel the meeting before Christmas every year. You have to put it on the calendar, which I see it's on your bulletin board already for next year, but you'll cancel it? I requested you guys to look into giving us the newspaper in the libraries. I had this going pretty good and being looked into, and then Mr. Letman decided to take it over. Now, I want it on the agenda of the next meeting of how far you've gotten with this, and I want some answers. I want my newspaper back. You guys all get it in your offices, every one of you. So I'd like some answers, because I have some answers. Lake Havasu, you are about ready to lose your newspaper to one day a week. I guarantee you that. I warned you guys several years ago not to let these bastards take over this newspaper. I've had this done to me in Eureka, California before. The commies move in and they take it over, and the first thing they do is get rid of your edit- your editorials, get rid of your comics, whatever. They, it's one-sided, like I don't believe. Well, I do believe because I've had this screw job before. They got Daisy Nelson down there as your editor. She used to be our editor. She will take it. They'll use her as a scapegoat. Daisy Nelson, thank God for leaving Bullhead, but you also took our newspaper with you. Now, they have broken the contract. They are supposed to deliver three days a week newspapers at a certain price. They've gotten rid of two days' delivery at the library. They have broken the contract. Tara, Action, you need to get your action together. Or somebody, procurement or whatever, somebody broke the contract. There, that's 104 days we don't get newspapers anymore. Now, they need to renegotiate this, and I'm sure that we can work something out with getting it in at least the three main libraries. I don't know about the one in Fort Mojave, and if they've got lines that can go in there easy, just with a drop. I don't know. It costs some money to put the lines in, but I don't think the price is going to be that expensive. We need our newspapers. One thing I miss is having the child molesters. Yeah.
Thank you, and we are adjourned. Thank you, Supervisors.